Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the... We're going to open up the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Move approval of the record, Mr. President.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, you oppose, or vote. This meeting is being televised live on cable, Channel 9, and being taped by PBD Access TV, and also being recorded by our city council stenographer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, under suspension of the rules, I'd like to invite the mayor up to speak on some issues, please.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Gould. There are a couple of items. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak. I know we have a very lengthy agenda, and there's a number of residents here on certain motions and certain hearings to be had. So I'll be brief, but very pleased to present to you two new appointments that I'm asking for approval on, as well as a request for a grant, authorization to apply for a grant. First is the appointments. The first one is a new appointment to be the business liaison for the city. Upon Julie Dagel moving over to become the city treasurer, left a vacancy, a large vacancy in the business liaison position for the community development department. Critical position. We had a number of outstanding candidates. I was very pleased with the quality of the candidates, people with very strong resumes, great interest, and affection for the city. But there was certainly one person who rose to the top and made the decision very easy. I think all of you are very familiar with Deb McGregor. Deb worked at City of Peabody for a number of years for Mayor Turegian, went over to work for the Essex County Attorney, John Blodgett. Recently worked for Progeria, that we're all very familiar with. And she was our outstanding director for the Centennial Celebration, most notably the parade. Just did an outstanding job, extremely well organized. It was amazing, the type of work, the amount of work that went in to make that parade and that Centennial Celebration a success, which it was. And Deb was the one that organized and ran that from the very beginning. Lifelong resident of Peabody. In her own words, she stated that she's been a really, her entire career has been as a liaison. One of the things that I really feel fortunate about is she already has a strong working relationship with so many of the stakeholders in the city, certainly within city government, within city hall, but also in the business community. Residents know her, they trust her, and I think she'll be able to hit the ground running and really fill an important need for this city as we continue to try to recruit business to our community, but not only recruit business, to help the existing businesses that are here, to try to expand and be successful. And another big factor, something I'm very pleased about, is that she has extensive experience in applying for and managing grants. So an excellent appointment, I think, is going to be outstanding for the City of Peabody. Julie Dagel did an excellent job, and I think Deb McGregor will continue to find work in that office and really do some terrific things for the city. So it's my honor to present Deb McGregor as the new community development director, business liaison position. And Deb is here and happy to come up and say hello.
Can I have a motion to receive, item 7A, please? Moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilors. I just want to thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm very excited to start this position as soon as possible and get running. As the mayor said, I was involved here in the city for many years, working for Mayor Turegian, and most recently with the parade. I've got some great ideas. Working with Kurt Belavance is going to be very exciting. And please know that I'm available to you to talk anytime you need me, any ideas that you might have, and I look forward to working with you and with the city. Thank you again.
Councils? Council Gould.
Mr. President, Deb, welcome home. Welcome home. You were, I didn't really have the pleasure of knowing you until you organized the Centennial Parade, and boy, what a job you did. So thank you for all your efforts, and we're looking forward to you helping us move forward. Thank you.
Council Gravel.
I don't think you could have found a better candidate in this city for that job. And I think Julie did a great job. I think Debbie's going to do a marvelous job, and I've had the pleasure of knowing Debbie back from the day. I don't even want to say how many years, Deb, because it'll kind of give away our age. But she, as the chairman of the Economic Committee for the Main Streets Group, I am thrilled to know that somebody of your caliber is going to be there, available to work with, and I'm sure will make some great strides. So I appreciate it, and good luck.
Council Matusus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, perfect choice, very good choice. I worked with Debbie. I was on the council in the '80s and the '90s when Debbie was the mayor's right-hand lady, and I'll tell you, I think, I thought she ran the mayor's office. We all know the mayor ran the mayor's office, but Debbie, you know, did a tremendous job, and she has the respect of the city, and I think that she is going to, as you said, Mayor, just take the ball and, you know, run with it. Good choice. Thank you.
Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo my colleagues' comments. This is really good news for the City of Peabody, to have Debbie joining the administration in this position. It's good news on the city side, because I think she will be incredibly helpful in encouraging new business to the city, but also for the existing business owners who need assistance anywhere along the line. You couldn't have a better person in that position. The one thing I was surprised at, Debbie, on your resume, I didn't see anything about being treasurer of the student council, so... Debbie and I were on student council together. How was that, David? But anyway, congratulations, great news for the city, and welcome aboard. I only wish I was here to work with you in your new capacity.
Council McGinn.
Just to add that, yeah, Deb's got great qualifications for this job, perfect temperament for the job, and just an overall great skill set that's really going to lend itself to carrying out this function. I worked very closely with Deb through 2015, 2016, on the parade, and I can attest firsthand to the fact that she just will go at it with dark persistence in terms of getting the job done. So I'm very, very much in favor of this and supportive of this appointment, and would be happy to make a motion when that time comes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council McGinn, and I just want to say that you might have gone to high school with her, Tom, but me and Debbie grew up next to each other. And many years later, we're neighbors again. So I'm excited. I know the caliber of person Debbie is, and her entire family. I think, Mr. Mayor, you could have made a better choice, and I think the City of Peabody is very lucky. And at that point in time, I'd like to ask Council McGinn if you'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the appointment of Deborah S. McGregor, 18 Menovido Circle, Peabody, Mass, to the position of business liaison for a one-year term to expire 12/31/2018. So moved.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsulis.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Absolutely.
Motion carries nine to nothing. Two absent.
Thank you, council. I also did want to ask for your approval of an appointment to the Historical Commission, another very familiar face in the city who's been a part of a number of city efforts, Cheryl Millard. I think many of you know her. She's been integrally involved with the garden club, that's been involved in a number of important projects in the city, as well as really the official photographer of the City of Peabody. But also, she works for, works in Centennial Park. It's a medical office. I'm not going to try to say the name, but it's under the umbrella of Salem Hospital. But somebody who has a great interest in history, preserving our city's history, promoting our city's history, and I wanted to put forward today for appointment to the Historical Commission Cheryl Millard, who is here today as well.
Council Gravel.
Is Cheryl going to speak?
She's a woman of few words, right?
She's usually high in the lens.
She only speaks with that camera. She makes sure you line up with you, so it looks good. I've had the pleasure of knowing Cheryl for many, many years, and I see her walking daily through Centennial. She puts on quite a few miles there, and wonderful person, great personality, and just a treasure that I'm so glad that she wants to get engaged and work with the city on the Historical Commission. Will probably have the best portfolio of pictures of historical buildings and sites across the North Shore, without a doubt. And with that nice new website they have, it'll be great.
Council Gould.
Thank you. I just want to say, welcome aboard, Cheryl. Thank you for all you do.
Council Charist.
Thank you. Again, I've known Cheryl for many years, and everything she's gotten involved, she just brought it to a whole new level. She's perfect for this position and other positions in the city. Whatever she took on, she's the best person. So welcome aboard, and again, we will have the best pictures of the historical society, monuments, or buildings throughout the city.
Cheryl's one of the newer people I met when I got involved in politics, and she's always there, and she's a friendly smile, and I'm looking forward to having her. Motion on the floor, please? Council Gravel.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion to have my friend Cheryl Millard appointed to the Historical Commission per request of the mayor. So moved.
You've heard the motion. Roll call vote.
Councilors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsulis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Thank you, council. And if I could, there was two other quick items I wanted to bring forward, hopefully quick, but there might be some questions I'm certainly here to answer. But the first one, I wanted to request authorization in order to apply for a park program grant. PARK is an acronym for Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Program. It's a program that we've been successful in the past, opportunity to purchase property, and looking to move forward and take a step forward with the Riverwalk Project. I know many of you are familiar. It's been a project that has been discussed and planned for, for really 20 years, under the leadership at the time of Mayor Turegian. I know Mayor Bonfanti supported the Riverwalk Project, and now we have an opportunity as a city to take a step forward. We've identified key parcels in order to make the Riverwalk a reality, which I think would be a terrific improvement in our downtown, the corridor between Main Street and Walnut Street. One of those properties is 24 Coller Street. It's a property owned by Mr. Paul Clark of Clark Barrel Steel Drum Company. I know many of you are familiar with the site. Really, all I'm asking for today is authorization to apply for a grant. If we were successful in negotiating with Mr. Clark a purchase price, that would come back to the council. I would not be able to sign a purchase and sale agreement without authority and authorization from you if we were able to reach an agreement. We might not be able to reach an agreement as to a price. That's something that's going to have to be determined as we negotiate. But it's a property that we've identified as a key parcel to make this a reality. It's almost directly behind the library. There's a large parcel where the post office is. That's owned by Mr. DeMambro. The property next to that, as you go down towards Salem, is Clark Barrel. It's a large piece of property. The next one would be crossing over Coller Street and you go to the property that's owned by Bagarella. Then we get into the Holy Ghost. Then we get into Chris Bibby, and then again to the Holy Ghost. So that's the stretch of land. We've been looking at parcels either to purchase, or parcels to get a right of way or an easement to allow for about a 10- to 15-foot walking trail, which we think would be wonderful for that area and bring some life back to that area. So this is a key parcel. We have spoken to Mr. Clark. He's willing to sit down and negotiate with us. However, we need authorization to apply for the grant, and that has to be done before December 31st. Again, we might not be successful in reaching terms. Negotiations might just break apart. If we are successful, again, it has to come back to you for final authority to authorize me to sign a purchase and sale agreement, and of course, we'd have to be successful in the grant application. So this is just preliminary to allow us the opportunity to apply for the grant and begin negotiations and see if it's something that we would be able to be successful in. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the Riverwalk Project. I know many of you are familiar with it, probably much more so than I am with some of the history. I did want to thank Brendan Callahan, who's been working on this project for a number of years and has kind of brought it forward to this point, and Kurt Belavance, of course, has been intimately involved, and Karen Sawyer Connard before him. But I'm just asking for authority to move forward with the grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, any questions, comments? Council Gravel.
If there's no comments or other questions, I'd like to make a motion to provide the mayor with that authorization to apply for the grant. As read by Council McGinn.
Thank you, Council Gravel. Council McGinn, the floor is yours.
This is Council Gravel's motion, I guess. Be it ordered by the City of Council, the City of Peabody, to authorize, as on a demand, appropriate funds from urban development revolving loan fund in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8C, for the purpose to enter into negotiation, purchase and sale agreement with Clark Steel Drum Company, Inc., of a parcel shown on assessment map 086 at parcel 142A. Point 982 acres of said parcel is to be managed and controlled by the PARK Commission and the City of Peabody in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, for the park and active recreation purposes. Furthermore, the mayor, the city council, and the PARK Commission are authorized to file on behalf of the City of Peabody any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the PARK Act, Chapter 933 Acts of 1977 as amended, and/or the Acts in any way connected with the scope of this project. The City of Peabody and the PARK Commission are authorized to enter all agreements and execute any and all reimbursements as may be necessary on behalf of the City of Peabody to effect said purposes. So moved.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion?
No, but I couldn't have read that any better. It was really a good job.
Roll call vote.
Councilors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsulis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Mr. President, I wanted to ask if the council would be okay. I wanted to see if we could take up the 10 Lowell Street matter now. Myself being here with Kurt Belavance, Brendan Callahan, I thought this might be an opportunity. Mike Ingris, I didn't want to hold them up. I know we have a lengthy agenda, and I wanted to see if that would be agreeable to the council.
Could I just ask? I need a one-minute recess. I definitely want to stay at their desk. I do need a one-minute recess. Thank you. So, councilors, if no one has any objection, we're going to go to 7B on the agenda. 7B? Oh, excuse me.
We already received a move under suspension rules, and we take up the report of Finance Committee of the meeting that was held this evening on the issue of 10 Lowell Street.
And you wanted to give the report? I'm sorry, council. Yes. Go right ahead.
So this evening, prior to this meeting, we had a meeting of the Finance Committee, and in attendance were myself as the chair, Council Gould, Council McGinn, Council Turco, and Council Walsh, sat in for Council Manning Martin. Also present at the meeting were Council Charist, Council Mitsulis. I think I got them all who were there. And there were two items on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was a discussion, was a discussion of purchase and sales agreement for 10 Lowell Street. The mayor gave us some background into what he was looking to do with that, particularly using it for open space. There was a pretty lengthy discussion on the potential to put some restrictions down, et cetera, and the request was really to be able to go ahead, purchase the building at 10 Lowell Street, and then demolish it. There was a motion made to allow the, there were actually a couple of motions made in regard to this particular subject, but there was a motion made to allow the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement. There were two requests that there be additions made to that purchase and sale agreement, that one of the restrictions be that the property cannot be used for residential or commercial use at all. There was some discussion about the possibility of using it for some parking, and that was to be determined, again, based on what kind of restrictions we have, because some CPC money is being put in there. The second item that was requested was that in the purchase and sale agreement that the seller be required or requested to put in writing that the proceeds from the sale were to be used directly for building improvements in the downtown, so that the money that we're paying for the elimination of the building would not go out of the city, and it would be used for the purpose of continuing to develop the downtown area. And that motion was made and approved unanimously. So moved.
Thank you, Council Gravel. Mr. Mayor?
Just to add to that, and I will try to be brief, I believe the purchase of this property would be beneficial to the city in many respects. Certainly, I do believe the building is an eyesore. Removing that building, demolishing that building, I think would continue our beautification efforts of the downtown, create some open space, which I think is needed downtown, and would allow us to do some flood mitigation work. As many of you know, that's a spot in the city, when we have had flood issues in the past, that that's a location that's had its troubles over the years. It's been a location that's been on the news years ago, and I think it's a correct decision to take that property, demolish it, just as we did a few years ago with the other half of the building, which was the former property owned by Codere at 16 Lowell Street. And I do think there might be some opportunity to put in some parking, beautify that area, do some flood mitigation work. We've identified that as a spot to put the George Peabody statue, which we're looking to do this coming year, which would be, I think, a great addition. But it would allow us more open space. The pop-up pubs, some of the community events that we've had downtown have been very well-received. We've brought in hundreds of people to certain events, and I think that would open up the city even more to allow for more people to come for festivals and events and ceremonies and things that people in our community can enjoy. I did speak to Sean Farrell. Sean is here. He is one of the owners of the property from Northfield Group, who owns the property. They purchased, as you may recall, the Gordon portfolio, and he said that absolutely part of the agreement would be that that money, any proceeds from this sale, would be used for the work at the Peabody locations. Specifically, the two locations that they're focusing on now is on Main Street, the place where Granite Coast Brewery will be going, and also the next-mecca thing. That work is already underway. This will work, this money will go towards supplementing that. One thing I did want to mention, and I'd ask for kind of, I guess, my authority to make the final decision on it, but Council Sinowitz, Council Sasla, you brought up some good points about, they have a $1.8 million city loan. The property they purchased was for 8.3 million. They have a $1.8 million loan. They've been paying for that regularly. They've been, there's been never any issues with the payment on that loan. And maybe figuring out a proportional number that that money could be used, the proceeds of the sale proportion could go back to pay down some of that city loan. And I would certainly be agreeable to that. They would be as agreeable to that as well. I'd just like to see what the costs are for some of the work they're going to be doing, but I thought, I always wanted to bring it up, council, because I thought it was a good suggestion, and Council Sasla asked me as well. I'd be willing to do that as well as a condition if council required. I would like to maybe give them a little flexibility, maybe if you'd allow me that opportunity to make that decision, but I thought it was a good suggestion.
Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I had spoken to the mayor earlier on this issue, so just part of, when he bought Arthur Gordon's properties for 8.3 million, it's a portfolio, and through the economic development, they took a 20% loan from the city. So now you're taking and selling off part of that portfolio, which devalues it. So that's why I had mentioned to the mayor that some of that proceeds should go back to that loan, so we're not upside down, God forbid something else happens. And that was my only concern about it. So if you can, you know, I'll leave it to your discretion, but it's 20% of 425. Whether it's, you come up with a 10% figure, I hope the developer's amenable to that, if he's here. But I think that would be fair, because there is a loan, you know, from the city.
Great. Thank you. I thought it was a good suggestion.
Council Gravel.
We should add to the motion that the amount, requested the maximum amount in the purchase and sales, $435,000.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Council, Council McGinn?
Thank you. Through you to Council Gravel. Recall, there was $10,000, which is for legal fees, so I think that number should be 425.
You're right. $425,000 plus $10,000 for legal fees and closing costs.
And we're gonna, we will not make it a part of the motion as far as discretionary to the mayor, as far as the reinvestment or the repayment on that? Some want to know where the council stands on that?
You can add it to the motion. It's discretionary in terms of what percentage, but you certainly add it to the motion. I have no problem with that.
Okay, so add it to the motion at the mayor's discretion regarding partial repayment of the initial community loan or investment in the City of Peabody. Any further discussion on the motion? There being none, roll call vote.
Councilors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsulis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla. Motion carries nine to nothing. Two absent.
Thank you, council. And if I could, I just wanted to thank Council Sinowitz, Council Walsh. I know this is your last meeting on the city council today. I want to thank you for partnering with me. You've both been hard-working, passionate advocates for your community, for the City of Peabody. I want to thank you for that. Tom, I know you're continuing your work, and I think Council Sinowitz will be helping in some way in the very near future as well. And I know you guys will both be intimately involved in a number of things going forward, and I just wanted to thank you personally. And I'm hoping Council Sinowitz that you could come. The inauguration on January 8th, I wanted to present you and Council Garibedian with a special gift from the city, so I'm hoping you can join us that night. I wanted to thank the both of you. Thank you.
Mr. President, if we can just finish the report, that way we won't have to take it up. To pay for the facility, we needed to make two transfers. First transfer was from account 2700033021, the amount of $185,000. That's Community Preservation Act, open space. And transfer that fund to 270-1811-58562-2018-0373, in the amount of $185,000, Community Preservation Act, 10 Lowell Street. So moved.
Heard the motion. Any discussion? Being none, roll call vote.
Councilors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mitsulis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing. Two absent.
Second part of the fund required to make up the $435,000, we would like to transfer from account 2700033005, the amount of $250,000. This is the receipts reserved from sale of Real Escade, and put it into account 27- from account 270-000-33005, the amount of $250,000. This is the receipts reserved from sale of Real Escade. And put it into account 270-1810-58768-2018-0373, the same amount of $250,000, acquisition of 10 Lowell Street, so moved.
You've heard the motion, any discussion on the motion? There being none, roll call vote.
Councilors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sousoulis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
The last item that we discussed on the agenda was the item of the, of financing for the golf course. And we reviewed three proposals from Mr. Gingrich. It was the consensus of the committee to keep this in committee, and to look at the, how well the golf course is doing, and to use contingency funding of reserves in a loan fashion, if required. But we'll let the, the golf course, let's see how they do in the, in the upcoming season, and make that decision. So that'll be next scheduled, probably in the June timeframe. So moved.
Further discussion on the motion, discussion? Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as you know, I've been talking about this for the last four or five years, and I'm stepping away, so I expect, you know, Council Gravel has some good ideas about that, how to fund it, and solve that cash flow problem. You know, I'd prefer to see, you look at it maybe in March, so you get a better idea when you're three months out, so you know if there's going to be a deficit, and where you're going to get the money from. But that'll be your call, you know, it's up to you. But I, a little disappointed that one person from the golf course is here. You know, we've been discussing this over and over and over, so I guess somebody else will have to carry on the torch on this issue. And I, I hope that, you know, that they don't lose money, as we did this year, and even on a good year, only made $7,000, so it makes me nervous. But time marches on, and somebody else will, will take it on. Thank you.
So that was not a motion, that was just a recommendation, I believe, by Council Gravel. And the only comment I'd like to make on that is actually, you know, it's very rare that, sometimes you're out in public, I wouldn't say it's rare that constituents talk to you about issues, but usually they're relating to potholes, trees, streets. But I did have two people call me up, and actually go out of their way to talk a little bit about this. So people are looking at this, they're aware that there are other communities that have golf courses, that do have private firms that come in. So you have my commitment, Council Sinowitz, I'll be, I'll be keeping my eyes on this. And, you know, it's, it's, it's one of our jewels of the city, but I think it's something that we've got to continue to keep our eye on the ball on it. And as I said, people, you know, they might not always show up, but they are, they are watching, they are looking at this. And so, that's it for me. Council Gravel?
All set.
Okay, we're going to move to, going back on the agenda, item 4B. Yeah, actually, excuse me, 4A, Council Turco.
Mr. President, move to receive a late communication from Attorney Jack Kelty withdrawing the application of 4A.
Yes, you heard, you heard the, 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 the motion to receive 4A, and we'll continue that. He is, yeah, we're going to, a motion to withdraw without prejudice. Correct, Councilor Turco?
Correct. And, Mr. President, while I have, vote on that motion. Did we vote on that motion? Because I-
On the motion, Mr. President.
Council McGinn.
Thank you. Through you to Council Turco. I just suggest maybe before you withdraw it, you've got four items to refer to it, so maybe before it's gone, refer these 8H, 8K, 8L, and 8S to this hearing.
Correct. My, my next motion was actually going to be, under suspension of the rules to receive a late communication for reapplication, to place on the agenda for the last meeting in January for 795 Jubilee Drive.
Further motion, all in favor? Any opposed to vote?
Mr. President, move to receive items 8H, 8K, 8L, and 8S, and refer to said application on 795 Jubilee Drive.
H, H, K, L, and S, is that correct, Council?
Correct. H, K, L, and S.
Thank you. Further motion, all in favor? Any opposed to vote?
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda, item 4B, special permit for Thomas J. Cassidy. And I'd like to ask the Assistant Clerk to read the public notice. Actually, excuse me, this is, we don't have to read it, I apologize. This is, we're going to, we're going to read it, just, this was continued from November 16th, so we're going to read it again.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City Peabody, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM, in the Franklin Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Thomas J. Cassidy, Sr., 10 Grove Street, Middleton, Mass., for a special permit to alter and expand a legally existing non-conforming dwelling, and continue to use said structure as a six-unit dwelling at 80-84 Wallace Street. Peabody, Mass. is filed in accordance with Sections 1.5, 6.1, 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councillor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
I guess you're not the one who puts the presents together for Christmas.
Thank you. John Kelty, an attorney with offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. And I'm appearing on, this evening, on behalf of Adelaide and Edward Mello, trustees of Realty Trust, which is the owner of the property at 8084 Wallace Street, here in Peabody, Massachusetts. The property is currently a six-unit apartment building. The plan is to completely renovate the property and replace it with a new, opt-a-code, completely renovated, structure. And in your package, Mr. Griffin, who is the, who is the general contractor, has done a terrific job of supplying you with materials that show the existing conditions, and they have also demonstrated to you the fact that we are building on the existing footprint. The building will be only slightly bigger in the rear right-hand side, where there is a slight bump out. We've been to the Board of Appeals, we've been for site plan review, and the planning board has given us a site plan approval. The zoning board of appeals awarded the variance that was required. That's all completed, so our last stop is here for the special permit that was applied for by Mr. Griffin. And we're happy to address any questions that the board may have, and we're happy to go through the pictures that have been submitted as part of the R package. They were, is that correct? Yes. And the, we know that there are three memorandums, at least one from the Board of Health, one from Fire Department, and I think the other is Board, is the Public Services Department. And we're complete, completely in compliance with their request, and what they've asked us to comply with, which is all code requirements. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Council. Would anybody like to speak in favor of this applicant? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in favor? Or any like to speak in opposition to the applicant? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Anybody like to speak in opposition? There being none, Councilman Taurus.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just for the information, the other councils, this, this, this hearing was continued from a couple of weeks ago, and the reason for that was to give the neighborhood an opportunity, anybody who was interested in this project, to voice their opinion, either they were opposed to it, or for it. And if there was anyone opposed to it, they'd be in this room right now. As a matter of fact, the, the comments I've got back is, they welcome this project, and they welcome, because they know it's going to enhance the, like you said, they know that, they're going to have a brand-new building there. Now, let me just give the councils a little history on this. This, this building was built in the late 1800s, and that was long before, you know, building codes existed. And some of these structures, sometimes are, some of these built, some structure problems, I don't know, I don't know the reason that the owner here is making-
Counsel, can you just hang on, we still have a little audio problem.
Oh, you are.
And just cut, and just shut off your, uh, thank you, Council.
Should I start again, or?
No.
No. Well, anyways, this property was built in the late 1800s, and like a lot of properties in the old section of the city, Ward 2, Ward 3, a lot of these buildings have structural problems, whatever the purpose of building would be. But anyways, getting back to this issue here, I've spoken to the neighbors, there isn't anyone opposed to it, and myself personally, I welcome this building, because as the people have told me, it's going to enhance the price of the properties already existing in the neighborhood. Councilors, I know my feeling on this, I'm in favor of this project, and I'll just turn it over to any of you other councils who have any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Taurus. Councilors? Council Sinowitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just through you to Attorney Kelty. I'm just reading the Board of Health, so since that building is made, you know, built in the 1800s, and there's concern about asbestos, and when you start demo, you know, demolition, that can go airborne, and that's, that's really a hazard.
Yes.
So where does that stand? Have they done tests to see what's in that building, to properly dispose of it?
Asbestos tested, not yet, right? Right. He, Tom Cassidy is the general contractor, and he says that he does expect there will be some. And when they pull the demo permits that are necessary, they'll comply with all the Board of Health regulations with respect to the handling and treatment of asbestos.
They'll file some sort of a plan to work with the-
Yes.
Okay.
And also, when you pull the demo, you got to bait the place of, yeah.
Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Mello family have really taken this project, and been very, very concerned about it. They're currently looking for approval, and in my opinion, they doing the right thing. They got Attorney Kelty to represent them. They reached out to the neighbors, they had a neighborhood meeting. They very much want to do the right thing, and I, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman Taurus?
No further questions. Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Further motion, all in favor? Any opposed to vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit to Thomas J. Cassidy, Sr., 80 and 84 Wallace Street, for the purpose to alter and expand a legally existing non-conforming dwelling, and continue to use said structure as a six-unit dwelling. So moved.
Further motion on the floor, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselor Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sousoulis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Sasla. Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Thank you, councilors.
Item 4C, I'm going to ask Council Sinowitz if you could come up and take, run the meeting, 4C and 4D, please.
Next item on the agenda, item 4C, it's a Class II motor vehicle license transfer. Will the city clerk please re-
This is a recessed hearing.
Oh, it's a recessed, well, maybe you can read, read it, so Allison, if you ever want to find it on the tape, it's easy.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City Peabody will conduct a recessed public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM, in the Franklin Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the application from Andre Borziken, 219 Harvard Avenue, Austin, Mass., and Rudy Alley, Acce, 156 Porter Street, Boston, Mass., requesting to obtain the transfer of a Class II motor vehicle license from AGA Auto Sales, Inc., DBA, Prestige Auto Sales, 288 Newbury Street, Peabody, Mass. Peabody City Council Councillor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is John Kelty, I'm an attorney, and I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. And I am appearing on behalf of the applicants, and I've had the opportunity to speak with the applicants. I think there was some concern about whether or not they were going to truly be in business. I think that Councilor Sasla was getting a mixed message, and in fact, those issues that had been somewhat medically related and personal in nature have been worked out, and it is the intention of the parties to go forward, and they were asking for the transfer of this Class II motor vehicle license. Yep.
Okay, is anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. Counselor Sasla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Counsel Kelty said it quite succinctly, there were some issues, but I have spoken to Andre and Rudy. I've driven by the property, I'm happy to see that, looks like it's fully staffed with cars, and, and I look forward to having them continue to run the business in the city of Peabody, and I'll be approving this transfer, supporting it.
Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. Just a quick question. This was the dealership, I guess through Attorney Kelty, this was the one that was half in Danvers?
Yes.
And has Danvers approved the transfer?
Yes.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, motion to close the public hearing. Council McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. Through you to Counselor Sasla. The, the conditions on here were for 24 cars, and it, just, I just want to remind her, is that, that's strictly for the- for the cars that are on the PBD portion of the lot? Is that correct?
Actually, I believe it should be. There are 12, if you look at the end of your packet, it's for 12 cars on the PBD side.
So I'm looking at the older, I'm looking at the special permit number 10, June 12, 2015, is it more? So 12 is the correct number. 12 is the number on the one that we're transferring, is that accurate, Counselor? Thank you.
That is correct, yes. Like a motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, comments? All in favor? Opposed? To vote?
Okay, and make a motion to, on the application from Andre Borziken, 219 Harvard Avenue, Austin, Mass., and Rudy Alewski, 156 Porter Street, Boston, Mass., requesting to obtain the transfer of Class II motor vehicle license from AGA Auto Sales, Inc., doing business as Prestige Auto Sales, 288 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass. So move.
On the motion, comments? Roll call vote.
Counselor Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sullis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Motion carries, nine to nothing, two absent.
Thank you, councillors.
Next on the agenda, item 4D, an entertainment license. Tim, you do me the honors.
Notice hereby given that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a recess public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Wiggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Guidance Group, LLC, DBA North Shore Lobster, 203 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass., requesting a transfer of an entertainment license from the Seawich Restaurant for the use of televisions at said 203 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass., PBD City Council, Councilor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Michael Sanford, I'm the manager of record for Guidance Group, which is doing business as North Shore Lobster on the market side, and Seagro's Restaurant on the restaurant side of the recently purchased property of 203 Newbury Street, the Seawich Restaurant. It's an existing entertainment license that is there for the sole purpose of a TV. It's a 72-seat facility with an eight-person, eight-capacity at the bar. Basically, it's just a 40-inch TV. We're just looking to get this license transferred over to us.
Anyone here looking to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. Counselor Sasla.
Thank you. So many of you are aware of this restaurant. It was funny, I stopped in, I met Mike for the first time yesterday, and I thanked him for investing in the City of PBD and keeping the restaurant going, and the first thing he said is, he said, "This is a landmark." And so that's how I feel about it, and it's been there for many years. There was an article in the City of PBD News recently about the transfer, and I'll just say that, like I said, I'm happy to see someone continuing, and I will encourage you all to go up there. He's doing a lot of changes, prepared foods, things like that. If you're looking for Christmas food or New Year's Eve food, I know he's all ready, and I won't go on much further, but I'll be supporting the transfer of the entertainment license.
Councillors? Counselor Sasla.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
I'd like to move to approve the application from Guidance Group, LLC, DBA North Shore Lobster, 203 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass., requesting a transfer for an entertainment license from the Seawich Restaurant for the use of televisions at said 203 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass. So move.
On the motion, comments? Roll call vote.
Counselor Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sullis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Motion carries, nine to nothing, two absent.
Next, new hearings, item 4E, a limousine license. Would the city clerk please read the notice?
Notice hereby given that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Wiggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Sir Charles Limousine, Inc., Car of Charles, D.O.R.E. 20, Murray Street, PBD, Mass., for a limousine license to allow for 10 vehicles at 200 Lake Street, PBD, Mass., PBD City Council, Councilor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you, Tim. Please state your name and address for the record.
How you doing this evening? My name is Giles DiOrio, I live at 20 Murray Street in PBD. I have a car service that I'm looking to put at the end of Lake Street, 200 Lake Street.
Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. Counselor Sasla.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. DiOrio last night. As many of you might know this building, 200 Lake Street is when you're going down Route 1 south, if you go under 128, it's, if you would take a right to go into Lowell Street, excuse me, Lake Street, it's that building right there in the corner, so right before the Gators Gas Station. So once again, right under 128, if you're going to go down to Lake Street, take a right, it's the building right there in the corner. And I had some limited concerns. We were not able to do a site visit together, but Mr. DiOrio has agreed to amend the permit for six limousines, and due to our schedules, once we have an opportunity after the New Year, we'll be doing a site visit together, and I do expect to see him back, looking for the additional four to go with 10 vehicles. Just for the record, it is, thanks to the advice of some Counselor Turco, making sure we limousine, what technically is a limousine, he runs a Sir Charles, a livery service, so it's strictly sedans, no 12, 14-passenger limos, no buses, just strictly sedans, and is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm comfortable, and he also went out of his way and spoke to some of the neighbors today, and they called me, and they said they had no concerns, so I'll be supporting the limousine license. Once again, we're going to amend that to six limousines from 10 for now.
Other councillors? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Sasla. Is there a reason we're reducing six to 10? I mean, 10 to 6?
The only, the reason is, is there was some concern from the neighbors as far as parking being an issue, and I have not been able to do a site visit to look at that. He has provided me with some pictures, there was not a parking point in your packet, he did provide me with one tonight. He's been amenable to go with the six. I think there'll be no issue with the 10, but I think also it'll allow the business to be up and running for probably 30 to 45 days, and any concerns that might be will be flushed out. I don't expect there to be any, but he's been amenable to it, and I'm very comfortable with the six for now.
Thank you.
Other councillors, comments? Counselor Sasla.
Thank you. Actually, on the application from Sir Charles Limousine, Inc., Car of Charles DiOrio, 20 Murray Street, PBD, Mass., for a limousine license to allow for six vehicles at 200 Lake Street, PBD, Mass. So move.
Councillors, on the motion, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
I already did that. I read it. Motion, close the public hearing? And now read the application? I lost you there. From Sir Charles Limousine, Inc., Car of Charles DiOrio, 20 Murray Street, PBD, Mass., for a limousine license to allow for 10, for six vehicles, six vehicles at 200 Lake Street, PBD, Mass. So move.
Roll call vote.
Counselor Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Sullis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Sasla.
Yes.
Nine, nothing, two absent.
And councillors, if no one objects on the suspension of rules, we have some people who, could I move to, could we move to special permit 9K? I have a representative from the Fire Department who has, who's asked me if we could push that up, so if anyone has no objections, can we go to, move to 9K special permit? 4K.
Next on the, item on the agenda, item 4K, a special permit for Farm Avenue. Would the city clerk please read the notice?
Notice that the City Council, the City PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Wiggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Farm Avenue, Two Lots, LLC, 27 Rear Farm Avenue, PBD, Mass., for a special permit, seeking a mulching, mulching slash composting operation and/or outdoor storage, the office and shop of a contractor with outdoor storage of vehicles and materials, and seeking a waiver from fence installation requirements at said 27 Rear Farm Avenue, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.2, 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance, PBD City Council, Councilor Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jason Panos, practicing law at 246 Andover Street, Suite 301, PBD, Massachusetts. And I am here for the petitioner. I also have with me Michael Weiss, who is also here for the petitioner, representing the petitioner. And I, before I begin, have letters in support by a couple of abutters, George Manos and Gregory Ford, through the president, if you'd like.
Motion received, communications.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
And I have, yes, two separate letters, and I have copies for each of you.
You want me to disturb it? Absolutely.
Mr. Acting President, just in the interest of time, there were two other late communications I would move to receive. One is an email communication from Jason Panos, dated December 13, 2017, and another is a late communication from the Fire Department, which I think is a clarification on what they submitted from the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Thank you, Counselor McGinn.
So by brief introduction, Michael Weiss has been in the landscaping and commercial property management business for about 30 years. For almost 25 of those years, he's operated his business from an adjacent property at 27 Farm Avenue. He moved his business to Salem and seeks to relocate back to the property subject to this petition, which is more central to his customers, and he really does want to continue to invest in the city and continue operating here. His operations are seasonal, with snow clearing and property management services provided in the winter months, cleaning landscaping and property management services in the spring, summer, and fall months. Seasonally, he employs up to 20 people at any given time, many of them PBD residents. He has a solid reputation as a clean and responsible operator, who does not cut corners in his work and approach to city matters, having been before the city's Conservation Commission and now here before you. He's also worked really hard to improve the property subject to this petition, cleaning out trash, debris, rotted auto parts, tires. A brief description of the application, Mr. Weiss proposes to use the property in the same manner he operated out of 27 Farm Avenue for almost 25 years, with no increased or adverse impacts. He's basically proposing to do the same thing here as he did down the street. The proposed use is also very important, to support his landscaping and property management business, and materials brought into the property will be from his own job sites. He does not propose to conduct a wholesale retail mulching, composting, and materials processing operation. Specifically, he proposes to conduct a mulching and composting operation with outdoor storage to support his business, and basically a contractor's yard as an office and shop for himself, basically, as a contractor to others. Because the uses are proposed to support his own business, and given the size of the property, the proposed uses in the application will be much less intense than those conducted at properties surrounding his. The proposed uses, however, will be consistent with and in harmony with those conducted immediately adjacent to and across the street from the property. As examples, at 27 Farm Ave., and in the general vicinity, there's a very active mulch and composting, junk collection, recycling processing, construction, trucking, and wholesale retail operations with intense industrial and business uses. And a great example of a contractor's yard is the DPS site right across the street at 50 Farm Avenue. We carefully reviewed the interdepartmental memoranda that were circulated, and we responded. We got those memoranda, I think on Monday, we circulated memo on Tuesday through Hays Engineering, who looked at the more technical aspects. And if I could just summarize them very briefly. The Board of Health, the petitioner will comply with all applicable best practices to the maximum extent applicable. For example, we're going to install a water tank on the site to keep dust and dirt to low levels. Prior to the commencement of any composting activities, the petitioner will develop plans associated with dust control and cleaning of rubbish and other compostable materials. The petitioner will develop a written nuisance prevention and control plan and provide a copy of that to the Health Department as required pursuant to 310 CMR. The petitioner will maintain the grounds in a clean and sanitary manner, and has the equipment through his property management company to do so. DPS comments, the applicant will notify DPS within a month before connecting to any city force main. And very importantly, the Fire Department comments, the petitioner will provide fencing and gates in compliance with the CMR, in compliance with the fire code. We have no problem with that. You will note, we did seek a waiver from the city ordinance to construct an impervious fence. We prefer to, there's no such requirement in the fire code. And the reason why we'd rather do just a regular chain link to keep the property properly fenced in from outsiders, keeping it safe, is quite frankly, an impervious fence is quite expensive, given the vast expanse. Also, I'll note, there's already a mass highway fence that basically straddles the property line. It's a six-foot chain link fence, and you'll note in your plan, that straddles the property line as it runs adjacent to Interstate 95 on this property bond. So elsewhere, where we maintain the materials, we will fence around that in compliance with the law. you'll note in your plan that straddles the property line as it runs adjacent to Interstate 95, uh, on this property bound. Um, so elsewhere where we maintain the, the materials, we will fence around that in compliance with, with, with the law. Um, as I mentioned, because Mr. Weiss is in the landscaping and property management business, he owns all of the equipment such as street sweepers, cleaners, uh, to maintain not only his own property but the public ways accessing the property. So any debris and dirt that may be tracked outside of the property, he will responsibly maintain that property, uh, maintain those, those roadways. And I think he has a track record, uh, of doing so, and I, uh, thank and hope that, that you know that. So with that, if you have any questions of me or Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Jason. Uh, is anybody here wishing to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor of the petitioner? Hearing nine, anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Sir? Just come up. State your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel N. Papanikolas, lifelong resident of the city of PB. And I am here rising to oppose the granting of the special permit. Generally, I would not have any opposition to this proposal. However, this is a very unique situation. This is a piece of land. Right over here. That is a wetland. A wetland. And the petitioner here tonight is seeking permission to conduct an operation there upon wetland. The proposal here shows a right of way leading to the property. Without that right of way, it would be an enclosed, uh, piece of property, piece of land without access to a public way. Now, back in 1985, thereabouts, the state made a taking, takings for the highway. And here, they also made a taking for a right of way. This is the property here is owned by Tele Compact Trice, which is, which my sister and I are trustees. This right of way was never effectuated within 20 years. It's 35 years now. Back then, it was the city, uh, Salem Country Club was the owner of that property. And they never did a single solitary thing to accept the right of way as outlined on this plot plan. As a result, the law is, the law says that it's, if you don't effectuate the right of way within 20 years, it extinguishes the right of way. That's the law. And I would suggest to you tonight, regardless of how you vote, this issue is going to be litigated in court. Okay? It's going to be litigated. They, they, they know that it's going to be litigated. They've been so informed, but notwithstanding this information, they still have proceeded to seek the permit from this body, uh, and council. So what I'm saying to you is, this is nothing more than a landlocked piece of land. That was formerly owned by the Salem Country Club. And they did not accept nor effectuate the right of way. So as a result, this right of way has been extinguished. And it's going to be litigated in court, I'm sure. And it's our intention to so litigate it. So I would suggest to you that if you're leaning in favor of granting this permit, I suggest to you that you ought to postpone any action until after the litigation regarding that right of way. So in order to be fair with all the parties, including ourselves, lifelong residents of the city of PB, and here we're in a beautiful setting here in this city hall. And I remember the days that I first came here. It was a penny sale. Saturday nights used to have a penny sale here in this very same room. And this was a common hall in which the public, uh, carried out a number of functions, including that penny sale. But in any event, uh, the, they have a problem here. And it's a big problem. This land, as I told you, is wetlands. And what has Mr. White done with those wetlands? He went storming to acquire this piece of property without really fully, uh, exploring the problems. Now, I've got a plot plan similar to this. Mr. Mello, the, uh, the surveyor, he went up on the site. He went up on the site with a surveyor, and Mr. Weiss was here seeking permit, ordered them off of the site. And what they were, were on my property. I ordered them to go onto the property. I requested. He eventually did go on and developed a site plan for me. But Mr. White thought, oh, I've, I've got a right of way. Well, that right of way has been extinguished. He had no right ordering the surveyor off the land anyhow. But Mr. Weiss, most recently, most recently, had pipes coming from this piece of land and dumping the water onto our property. He had two humongous pumps there pumping it away. And he had put the pipes, pipes onto our property, uh, about 100, 200 feet on the property. We had to call up City Hall and complain about it. And we did complain about it. And when they went up there, and I forget the person's name, he was at DPW. He ordered them to remove the pipes and the pumps off my property. And he did that. And the pipes are that big, believe me. They're like hydrants. And he was drawing the water off the wetlands and dumping it onto my property. What he's done since is this culvert. He's effectuated a culvert to carry the water from his property onto my property. It's going to be litigated anyhow. But that's the situation. That's, they didn't tell you that. But this is a problem not only for Mr. Weiss, but for the city of PB as well. Accordingly, I, like I said to you earlier, generally, I would not be here opposing this proposal, but for the fact that this is wetlands that has water, and, uh, that water, Mr. Weiss is, uh, moving that water from his land onto my property. So I've got, I've got the reasons, a good reason to oppose this, this proposal here tonight. And I am in opposition to the proposal, and I think it's only fair that the, uh, proposal be denied or at least postponed, uh, until after the litigation, which is going to take a considerable piece of time to complete. Uh, accordingly, my, uh, he's asking, he's asking for a number of things. He's in effect saying, give me the right to do whatever I want to do. Uh, there's, uh, and you will note in the application that he's not asking just for one thing, he's asking for a number of things. Accordingly, I strongly suggest that, uh, this proposal be denied or at the very, uh, or postponed to a later date after the litigation is completed. I know I haven't approached you earlier, and maybe you have made commitments, but this is, your commitments made to you is without, without the information that I'm giving you tonight. Thank you. I'll answer any questions that you want. Anyone?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing nine, Councillor Sasla.
So many of you, I believe, are familiar with both the petitioner and the objectioner. You know, this piece of property, uh, I'm extremely familiar with this part of, part of the area. I believe the operation that he wants to open up is harmonious with what's going on up there. Um, you know, there were a lot of things said, um, but, you know, I think our job is, is when there are threats of litigation and there are, you know, things are talked about wetlands and stuff like that. To me, I look to our city departments, and I look at the paperwork, and I look to objections, um, that they have. Because, you know, their job is to go through the special permit and do their due diligence. And I think they did. I think that the petitioner answered the objections. Um, I will say this, that I, uh, the one issue was the waiver from the fence installation requirements. Um, just to give a little background on that, I, I did have a conversation, uh, with Captain Tremblay today regarding that, and he explained to me, uh, that, you know, that's not for, um, it's not for aesthetics. That is strictly for, uh, in this day and age, for safety purposes. You know, we want to keep, uh, uh, people from accessing, uh, Mr., for his own safety and for the abutter's safety, we don't want to keep people from being able to access his property, creating any damage. Uh, God forbid anyone else wants to go up there and do any harm, uh, to himself or to the surrounding area. Uh, Mr. Weiss, uh, has agreed to put the, uh, the fence up around the property, and, um, if he, when he chooses to engage in the mulch operation for strictly his own clients, he will also fence in those areas that are required and asked of by the, um, by the, um, by the, uh, fire department. Um, I'm going to open up to the council for other questions, and I'm going to make some, I'm going to reserve some comments for a few minutes. Thank you.
Well, Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I couldn't agree with Council Sasla more. I think that's why we have the special permit application, and we refer these to the department heads. And if there was an issue with an access road, I believe our city engineers at our DPW would have commented, um, and maybe our fire department. They haven't. Um, as far as the conservation, there's a lengthy packet here that contains conditions from conservation. We have a very, very thorough conservation commission, and I'm very confident in them. So I, I just don't, as far as the, uh, pending litigation, if there is any, I, I don't think that we could possibly delay a special permit because of potential litigation. So I would be in favor.
Council Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, perhaps the petitioner would like to comment on the, the driveway end. Maybe you could enlighten the council to your position on that?
Absolutely. Uh, I'd like to answer that by first saying, that property is not the subject of this special permit application. It is expressly exempted. The special permit application applies to this property and that property. It does not apply to this. Number one. Number two, I absolutely disagree with the position explained to you today by the abutter. Uh, he is absolutely wrong on the law. We have a valid easement that was taken in 1971. It is in effect. It is in place. I can read to you the actual portion of the easement that allows us to enter upon, construct a roadway and a pertinent utilities. And I am of the position that that easement is valid. If there's litigation coming our way, I haven't seen it. We're not on the opposite side of a V yet. I don't know what to tell you. Um, we will defend that litigation strenuously, and I believe we will prevail. But that's not what's before you today. What's before you today is a special permit application on this property. And that property.
Council Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Panos, do you have access to the two lots without using the questionable right of way?
Uh, we do. Actually, we do have temporary access to the Manos property.
You have temporary?
Yes.
And if you're granted the special permit, do you, where is your right of way? Where is your access?
It is our intention to access through Farm Avenue. Uh, we have a road built, uh, and it is pending completion. We have a couple of DEP issues that we are, uh, clearing. We got, uh, we got part of the, um, approval from the DEP from the MEPA review process, and we're waiting for one more certification to come through, and then we'll complete that roadway.
I couldn't find in our package, and I might have missed it, or...
Yes.
It's not there. Is there a ruling from the conservation commission? Is it conservation?
There's a, uh, an order of conditions allowing construction of the road.
Okay, that's in this package, sir?
It is. I provided you with the order, which by the way, went unappealed.
Mr. Papanikolas, do you, do you agree with, if I may, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Mr. Papanikolas, were you of the understanding that the lots in question are accurate to what Mr. Panos pointed out? Are those the two lots that you, do you agree that those are the two lots in question as opposed to what Mr. Panos thought you were questioning?
I don't understand your question.
I guess Mr. Panos said that the right of way is not the lots that are, that he is, has applied for. Is that your understanding? I don't want you to think that they're going to, they're going to be using a different access road than, than the right of way that you're describing. than, than the right of way that you're describing. Maybe I'm not making myself clear enough, and I'm confusing myself here. Mr. Panos said there are two lots in question. Are those the two lots that you were of the same understanding, those, those two lots?
This is one lot here, it's depicted on the plan. And the other lot is a very narrow piece that fronts Farm Avenue. And what the conservation did was they approved, they approved the moving of the water from this land to that one lot that fronts Farm Avenue. And basically, the right of way, the right of way, even in the right of way that the state granted, did not give them permission to, to move water onto my property so that it could join up with the other piece on Farm Avenue. So, but that's an issue
Mr. Chairman.
that's going to be litigated.
If we could, Mr. Chairman, could we take a two-minute recess and look at a map on the table here?
Two-minute recess. Counsel Gould, are you, we're okay? Mitsoulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, you know, after going up there and looking at that map, I feel a little more comfortable if I went up and saw the property. I'm not comfortable voting on something that I have not taken a look at. I'm not trying to put this stall this or anything, but I want to make sure I'm making the right vote on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other counselors? Counsel Gould.
I would, I would recommend, if it's possible, that we do that, a site review, or Counselor, I don't want to delay it, and this is your, your ward, but if there are questions, you know.
Two Counselors Gould, there's a new counsel coming on. You can't carry it over. Started the public hearing with this counsel, and if we bring in new people, then it's a problem. I just want to say a few things. So number one, I understand what the petitioner's concerns, but it's not this counsel's job to adjudicate a right of way, saying whether it's legal or it's not legal. That has to be done in court. So I, I think at the end of the day, we have to look at the special permit, what he's asking for. Now, I understand your concerns, flooding, pumping water onto wetlands. I don't know the full issues between the two ears, that's one thing, the right of way is one thing. But I have to stay focused on the special permit and what he's asking for. And if you choose to litigate, then you choose to litigate. But I can't, that can't be part of this on the, on the right of way. Because it's going to be, it's going to be a discussion in court between Mr. Panos and yourself, and I'm not an attorney. So that's just my comment on that. Back to Counsel Saslaw.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, what's before us, I support, bottom line. I've known Mike Weiss, I know many of you have, I know the operations he runs. You know, I also know Mr. Papa Nicholas, he's a constituent of mine. And I respect him, and I know what he's, been a longtime citizen. But he came up and he said a lot of things tonight. And in the interest of full disclosure, sometimes two people don't get along. I can't say it any more clearly than that. And if they want to threaten litigation, and you guys want to buy into that, shame. Because it's a good proposal, it's a legal proposal, it's been vetted. You have a special permit application in front of you, 57 pages long, maybe 54, I forget. He has gone through every hoop, he has done everything asked of him. And sometimes neighbors don't get along, and that's the situation here tonight. I respect both of them, but I'm going to support this proposal. It's a tough call for Mr. Weiss, we've got two people not here, it's a shame. But it's the last meeting of the year, and I'll just end with this. A counsel on this floor once said about the petitioner tonight, I don't like Mike Weiss, the billboard guy, I like Mike Weiss, the landscaper. And that's all he's trying to do, is be Mike Weiss, the landscaper, and do what he needs to do. And I hope, and I'm going to ask for your support, and it's his choice whether or not he wants to go forward based upon the number of people that are here tonight.
Counsel Gould.
That was me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was me, Counselor, that said I don't like Mike Weiss, the billboard guy, I like Mike Weiss, the landscaper. Did you say it's a shame, we should, it's a shame that we are buying into the right of way? Did I hear you say that? Through the chair.
Counsel Saslaw.
What I'm saying is, when things are brought up, that we have not the right of way, but as far as, there's a lot of things that were brought up about things being pumped and stuff like that, threat of litigation. I just don't think that, I'll agree with my counsel sinners when certain things are said, I think we have to stick to the point. The right of way issue, he has, that special permit is the two lots. That's what we have is before us. The right of way, we're not going to make a determination on that, that's not before us. So I, you know, he also has access through Mr. Manos's property. So his right of way, that's an issue that Mr. Weiss has to deal with if Mr. Papa Nicholas chose to do litigation. But I'm not going to not approve it, I'm going to take a vote based upon that, because that is not what I feel is before us, Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counselor Saslaw. And nothing could be more obvious that we're here to deal with the special permit. But the fact that I ask questions about a right of way does not deserve you to say I should be ashamed that that's the route that I may have been taking. I was not implying that I was not going to support it, or the fact that I didn't think that Mr. Panos, or that Mr. Weiss, rather, was pumping water. You do not need to say that it was a shame that I was questioning that, Mr. Counselor Saslaw.
You know, I can go back and watch the tape, Tom, Counselor Gould. It was not directed at you by any means, if you took it that way, I apologize. But by no means was that my intent at all whatsoever.
Okay, Counsel Chairess.
Thank you, just pointing information. Tonight is the two parcels. If we grant this special permit, and information comes back to us that's not accurate as we hear it tonight, can we revoke the special permit? Through the chair.
I think Counsel Chair should have to have a new public hearing to, you know, to revoke, to revoke it. You'd have to have just cause, and I'm sure the attorneys would be filing to the city. Mr. Panos, do you have a comment on that?
If anything we said tonight in our application or otherwise in our comments is untrue, intentionally untrue, and that's what you're forming the basis of your assumed approval, then yes, I would say you would have grounds to revisit the special permit and ultimately revoke it.
Counsel Chair.
Thank you. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that anyone's doing anything of that. Sometimes, you know, you have two different sides,
Sure.
and the middle is what's actually accurate.
But I can tell you, and I don't mean to interrupt, I've looked at this, and I'm a real estate attorney. I, I've been practicing title real estate for almost 20 years since I got out of law school. I looked at this easement, I looked at it carefully. I don't think we would go down this road, no pun intended, if I thought that we didn't have access and we had a landlocked piece of property. There has been, in engineering fees alone, just to get through the Conservation Commission, the DEP, the MIPA review, I'd say close to $100,000 in legal and engineering fees. On a wing and a prayer, I don't think so. The construction costs alone, Mr. Weiss is going to invest over $250,000 in constructing that road and doing the site improvements, without even building a building. On a wing and a prayer, I don't think so. So I stand before you pretty confident that we have a validly recording, and recorded and existing easement that was taken by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which said easement consists of the right to enter upon said land at any time to construct thereon and to use and maintain a roadway in necessary utilities. That is in place today, as it was in 1971 when it was taken.
Counsel Greville. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Chairess, I apologize.
But it's not subject to this petition tonight. And I think that's the underlying point, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, thank you for that. Can you assure this board tonight that there will be no pumping of any water from the special permit application sites onto any other property?
I can assure you of that. As a matter of fact, through the order of conditions which you have in your packet, we have a stormwater management plan in place that we must implement in order to get our certificate of compliance. We will apply for a certificate of compliance through the Conservation Commission once the roadway is complete. With that comes an operations and maintenance plan. With that comes the stormwater management plan. And I have to tell you, and, and I don't mean to go into the detail, the excruciating detail of the Conservation Commission meeting that we had a year ago. And that hearing lasted three hours, Mr. Papa Nicholas was there. Three hours. And I'll tell you what I told them. We've made, we've done nothing but make this property and the surrounding area better, while all of the stuff from the hyper-intensive uses that are taking place around us, this is the Wild West, washed throughout property.
Jason, let's, let's stick to the
Sure.
stick to, I don't want to get too far off track.
Sure, sure.
Counsel Greville.
I was kind of getting to enjoy the story, I was
I know, and I apologize.
I figured, oh, what the heck. I'm not a lawyer. And I don't know what causes something to be effectuated or not effectuated. And frankly, I, as you said, it's really not up to me to know that. I mean, that's not what I'm here for. I look at the proposal, person owns two, two lots, and he has what he thinks is his right of way. And he's willing, and he's, has what he thinks is his ability to build a road on the right of way. Unless somebody at the city level, in the engineer's office, city solicitor, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, somebody says, well, he really doesn't have that. He wants that, but we're not sure he has that. I mean, we're kind of in a position where I, I would have to agree with my fellow counselors in that, do we believe this is a good use for these two pieces of property, regardless of the right of way? Because the risk of the failure of the right of way to stand is all with the petitioner. If they litigate it, and it fails to pass the stiff test, and if it said that, that right of way doesn't exist anymore, then they've invested a lot of money in dead hole. And there's not a lot they're going to be able to do with it. So I'm willing to vote on the petition, not on, you know, the, the thought that they might not have the right of way, because if they don't, they're going to suffer the consequences of that. Because if they don't, I think the one who wins in that battle would say, then take the road down, eliminate the pipes that you put in, and get it off my land. So I think if they're willing to run that risk and already made this kind of an investment, I can't see why we wouldn't vote on the special permit itself, which is what they're asking us for. And then they can go fight in court, and it has nothing to do with, to me, with two neighbors that don't get along. I, I understand what you're saying, I just, you know, that's not my business. My business is, should we, does this special permit meet the conditions of a special permit that allows for a good use for the betterment of that particular piece of property? And if we believe that's the case, then we vote in favor, if we don't, then we vote against. But I can't draw judgment on right of way. I just don't have the bandwidth, the knowledge, the capability, or the skill from a legal perspective. So I have to depend on those who support us, and those who support us did not bring that up as an issue. I didn't, I went through the whole packet while people were talking, and I didn't find one objection on the issue of contested right of way. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, this is, is, as Jason was pointing out, a special permit for two parcels of land, and for a special use. So that's, that's where I stand, I plan on voting that.
Counsel Greville, if there's no more comments, I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and then we'll go to Counsel Saslaw. I think we've debated this issue, you know, for a bit. Number one, we're here for a special permit because of its outdoor use of storage. So when we look at that whole area, I don't have an issue with the use. There is mulch piles, and there's construction companies, the DPW. So that part of it, I don't have any concern with. Right of way, I can't, I can't weigh in on that. The only concern I would have is, in, is the issue of flooding wetlands. And I know that Mr. Panos says they're working on it. I was a little concerned when I hear the pipes were put in, it was flooding Mr. Papa Nicholas's property, pipes were removed. So Jason, here's your chance, tell me why that was done, why it was flooding his property, and how are you going to prevent that in the future?
Is this better? Okay.
Oh, they're wireless, that's great. Since my time on the zoning board. So my understanding was, it was a mistake. They were temporarily placed there while the construction of the roadway was, was happening. When it was brought to our attention, we immediately rectified it. We have no interest in violating
interest in violating the order of conditions that was issued. We have no interest, there are a lot of eyes on this. The DEP is on it, MEPA, Department of Environmental Protection, the Conservation Commission, and we've been in constant contact with all of those parties. How can I assure it won't happen again? We've got engineers on the ground. And we use them judiciously. And I can, I can tell you that that we will prevent that from happening to the best of our ability. Mistakes happen, though.
Let me finish, and the other pair of eyes is right here.
I'm sorry?
The other pair of eyes you missed, you didn't mention is sitting right here.
Of course.
They'll be watching you if you violate.
Of course.
If you get this permit. Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question was great, and I appreciate it, but I just don't want to hear it from Mr. Panos. I'd like to hear it from Mr. Weiss. If he could answer your exact question as to why water was pumped onto somebody else's property, and how he's going to prevent that from happening.
Name and address for the record. Michael Weiss, 119 Galups Point Road, Swanscott.
Mr. Weiss, the question was the same as Counsel Sinewitz had previously asked. Can you tell us why water was being pumped onto Mr. Papa Nicholas's property? And after you tell us why, can you tell us how you can guarantee us that you're going to prevent that from happening in the future?
Well, the drain was plugged, so instead of, there's no drains on the street, the catch basin on the street. So, instead of dumping it onto the street, I went down past where they got the culvert blocked up and clogged, and just put it through the culvert, so it would just keep going back through the other way. Because the water wasn't draining because it was blocked by others. That's all. And I asked the permission of the people there. We all, we all.
By J.D. Raymond?
Yeah, the J.D. Raymond yard, which we all rent from Mr. Papa Nicholas. I was a renter from him.
Okay, the next part of the question is, how do you intend on preventing that from happening in the future?
We're not going to do it anymore. We're not going to pump the water on his property. We don't need to pump the water on his property. Or pump it.
Will there be any pumping at all?
No, there will be no pumping on his property.
Thank you.
Counsel Saslaw.
Thank you. So, you know, I believe in, you know, we all have a right to question anything. I've never, since I've been the president this entire year, ever, you know, put the gavel down on anybody, no, I ever do that tonight. So, I, once again, I just think Attorney Panos, Counsel Sinewitz, and Counsel Gravell probably said it much better than me. All I was trying to say was the fact that if there's a right of way issue, and the petitioner wants to get the special permit, that's their concern. That's not my personal concern, and I don't think it's part of the special permit, but I understand why someone might ask a question about it. But, as I said, I don't think it's a wing and a prayer. And unfortunately, and you all know me by now, I have no problem doing site visits, big pig barbecue, whatever it may be. It's just, we're here at the last meeting. You know, maybe timing is not great, but it is what it is, and it's before us. And I can assure you, if I did not feel comfortable, if I didn't feel that the proposal was harmonious with the neighbors, I would no way, you know, ask for your support for this special permit tonight. But I think I do take pride in the due diligence that I do. I will do site reviews, but as I said, unfortunately, timing is not a great situation. But I hope you put your faith and trust in me and what I've done in the past. And on that, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
On the motion, any comments? Counsel Mazzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the one that asked for a site review, and I realize that this is our last meeting, and I know what we have to do. And I know Mr. Papa Nicholas, and I don't know Mr. Weiss, but I know you, Counsel, and I hope that I do the right thing. I mean, that's what I'm on this council for, taking the issue itself and looking at the use, and I do not have a problem with the use. And I can see this being remedied in litigation. And that's where it's going. And to put somebody, you know, I don't know what it's going to do to their business. I don't know what position he is. I mean, I don't know anything about what Mr. Weiss does, but I'm looking at the use of that property, and I just want to do the right thing for, you know, the city of Peabody. And you, Mr. Papa Nicholas, and I really don't have a problem with this. I don't have a problem with that use. I have a problem if they're dumping wetlands onto your property. I certainly have a problem with that. And if they're using a right of way they're not supposed to be using, I certainly have a problem with that, but that's going to come out in litigation. The use, I do not have a problem with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Mazzulis. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. President, I know you have a motion on the floor. Just because Attorney Panos made reference to the memo from the Health Department. I don't think we've picked up eight R yet, so after we close the hearing, if we could grab that. We have a motion, yeah.
Okay, we'll take. On the motion, all in favor and opposed, it's a vote. Counselor Saslaw.
Yes, motion received. Item is, I'm sorry, Counsel, which item number is it?
We got the late communications earlier, so just eight R at this point, I think, is pending.
Eight R.
All in favor and opposed, it's a vote.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit, excuse me, on the application from Farm Avenue Two Lots LLC, 27 Rear Farm Avenue, Peabody, Mass. For a special permit seeking a mulching composting operation into outdoor storage the office and shop of a contractor with outdoor storage of vehicles and materials. We, I just have to interject. We are going to, we'll be putting a fence up.
Yes.
Right, so there's no waiver of a fence requirement. And a pervious fence around the property.
We would like it not to have to be impervious if that serves the pleasure of the board, the council.
I said pervious, I didn't know if that's.
Oh, pervious. I'm sorry, yes. Thank you.
And seeking a pervious fence at said 27 Rear Farm Avenue, Peabody, Mass. Is filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.2, 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. So moved.
On the motion, counselors, roll call vote.
Counselors Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw. Sinewitz. Motion carries, nine to nothing, two absent. Thank you very much.
Counsel Saslaw is requesting a five-minute recess.
Counsel, Sinewitz has asked if we could do item 4G. 4G.
Sure.
4G, special permit for Barton Triumont, Care of Aggregate Industries. If the clerk will read the public notice.
Notice is here by giving that the City Council of the City Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass. On the application from Barton Triumont Inc., Care of Aggregate Industries Northeast Region Inc., 1715 Broadway, Saugus, Mass. For a special permit to construct a new electric control house to house the electrical infrastructure for the existing asphalt plant at 55 Russell Street, Peabody, Mass. Is filed in accordance with Sections 1.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Counsel Joel D. Saslaw, City Council President.
Counsel.
Thank you, members of the City Council. My name is John Kelty, I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. Here at Pier. This evening, on behalf of Barton Triumont Inc., who operates, whose corporate headquarters is at 1715 Broadway in Saugus, Mass. We are here this evening about the property of 55 Russell Street here in Peabody, Massachusetts, and we seek a special permit to construct a new electric control house to house the electrical infrastructure for the existing asphalt plant. The proposed building is 23.5 feet by 17.6 feet, and it will house and upgrade the electrical system that's already in place at the plant. It will not result in additional power being provided to the premises. It will not result in the increase of operations at the premises. And it's simply to upgrade, create a safer working environment, and at the same time to make the property in general safer with respect to even the actual units that are on the site. So it was time for this upgrade, and we're going to meet the standards that are required by Aggregate Industries and by the various departments here in the city. I'm happy to answer any questions. We did have a meeting on the site with our neighbors, and that went well. And we think that we allayed any fears that the those neighbors had that there was going to be an increase in the operation of the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone like to speak in favor? Would anybody like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anybody like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Being known, Counsel Sinewitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a couple of meetings, actually, at the quarry. The first one didn't go good. The second one went very well when we kind of all came to the table. And I want to thank Bob Callahan, who's an electrician, who explained a lot to us, because I'm not an electrician. But I think it's a pretty simple what they're asking for. They want to upgrade their power. They want to build a 17 and 1/2 by 23 and 1/2-foot building to house it for the power for the asphalt plant. There's no expansion. There's nothing, and I think that was the concern of some of the neighbors, that we're going to bring in a whole boatload of power and bring in all new equipment. So, that's not what it's about, and we wanted assurances that that's what, you know, it was just strictly for safety, make it more efficient, and make it the plant run, you know, a little more effectively. So, through you, Mr. President, to Attorney Kelty, you have a, at the Board of Appeals.
Yes, I will withdraw that.
You will, I want to make that part, if this passes, I want to make that part of the special permit you withdraw from the Board of Appeals.
Sure. The letter's written, I'll deliver it tomorrow.
Okay. And I really don't have any other comments or questions. I mean, to me, it seems pretty straightforward. So, thank you.
There are two representatives of Barton Triumont with me this evening, if you had any questions.
Open up. Floor of the counselors, any counselors? Counsel Sinewitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I make a motion, move to close the public hearing.
For the motion, all in favor and opposed, a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I move approval of Barton Triumont Inc., Care of Aggregate Industries, Inc., of 1715 Broadway, Saugus, for a special permit to construct a new electrical control house to house the electrical infrastructure for the existing asphalt plant at 55 Russell Street. So moved.
For the motion, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Gravell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzulis. Charis.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Motion carries, nine to nothing.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say thank you, Aggregate. It's been rocky, up and down, but we coexist. And I want to thank Bob Callahan for coming out. I know Mary couldn't be here tonight. And I want to thank you for all your participation and helping out over the years. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselors.
Item 4F, entertainment license for Tops Chercia. Please read the public notice, the clerk.
Mr. President? Before you open that public hearing, I think.
Yeah, that's being withdrawn. Jack Kelty withdrew that. Hey, Jack.
Jack.
You're up.
F, Counselor.
Tops. I would respectfully request that that matter be withdrawn to enable us to have a meeting after the first of the year with some of our neighbors, and we'll be back.
You've heard it?
Just a question.
Yes, Counsel McGinn.
Before there's, if we don't open the hearing, there's no issue with continuing, right?
Sure there would be, we got a new counsel.
Even if the hearing isn't open, Tim, is that correct?
If we don't open the hearing, we've continued.
That's my point. I don't know that it needs to be withdrawn. I think it can be continued if it's not open.
I mean, that's my opinion. I mean, if we continue the hearing and not open it, you can carry it over.
I just.
I think that we would probably be continuing it for sort of an inordinately long period of time, so I don't mind withdrawing it. There's not fees, and there's not advertising, so, you know.
Okay, well, I'm going to have this question with another matter, so the answer is still important to me. So, thank you, Mr. President.
We are receiving withdrawal. We are accepting withdrawal.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, on that, I think you're better off withdrawing it, Jack, because you'll have an answer if you have a neighborhood meeting to see if you want to continue this, so.
I have no objection.
Thank you. Next up, item 4H, special permit, Covici Hernandez and Daniel Mello.
Mr. President.
Counsel McGinn.
This is a matter that we want to continue. So I'd request that the special, that the hearing, the public hearing not be open.
That's fine.
So moved to continue.
Moved to continue, item 4H.
Yep. And under suspension of the rules, Mr. President, I'd like to receive item 8E and refer it to this continued hearing.
For the motion, all in favor and opposed, a vote.
Mr. President, there's also a late communication associated with this, which I would.
Excuse me, Counsel, was there a date that you had for the 4H?
The first meeting in January.
The first meeting in January, thank you. Okay, and I'm sorry to hear that second.
Yep, so we got 8E, and there's also a late communication with respect to this that I'd like to receive.
Motion received, late communication, all in favor and opposed, a vote. Item, excuse me, item 4I, special permit. Actually, excuse me. is the, I believe we need to actually hear item 10. It's B. It is B. It is on your agenda as D, but your, the support documentation in your packet is B. There was, there should be 10 A, B, C, D, E, F in your packet tonight. But on the agenda, it's misnumbered as D, E, F, G, H, just for clarification. So, we have to transfer the special permit before we can then amend the special permit. That is, that is the chair's thoughts on that, and I consulted with a few people on that. I believe the city clerk agrees with me. Any questions on that? I think that's the proper way to do it. Okay? So, we're going to go to 10D, special permit transfer request. This is from Total Outdoor to Lamar, advertising for billboard located at 1 rear, Newbury Street. Special permit 2-2014.
Point information. Point of information, 10D is F. F is G. T is A. I don't even know what any of the numbers are.
10B. 10B is in boy.
10B is the one for 1 rear.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I just need a motion from the floor to approve the special permit transfer request.
So moved.
For the motion? Discussion on the motion, Counsel Sinewitz?
Yes, Mr. President. The only thing I want to add is, because using Mr. Kelty's own words at one of the previous meetings, that we were very vague in our billboard terminology. So I want to make sure that this transfer is for a digital billboard, and every one of these, I want to clearly state what the billboard is. So no one's coming back and saying, "You were vague when you transferred this," or "You did that," or "You altered..." So we're clear on what we're doing, so, and that's what, in that motion, I just want to make sure that that's clear. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other further discussion? Counsel Gould.
So currently, it threw, I'm sorry, through you to Counsel Sinewitz, if I may. It is currently a digital billboard and a transfer to new owner as a digital billboard?
Yes. Well, it was a digital billboard, but it got cannibalized and thrown over the side.
Correct.
Illegally.
But we permitted it as a digital billboard.
Right. It's permitted now, without a transfer, from Total Outdoor to Lamar. Lamar, I know they're not here by all, Jack is here representing them, so technically, even though it's, it's been stripped, it's a digital billboard.
Digital, and can only go back up as a digital?
Correct. When, if they come for that special permit to alter the face of a billboard, then they can ask.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote on the transfer of the digital billboard from Total Outdoor to Lamar.
Counselors Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Mazzullis.
Yes.
Charist.
Yes.
Sinewitz.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Counsel Sasla, how about we take all of 10 and get rid of it?
That's fine with me. I just didn't know if we're going to go back to I, but that's, that's fine with me, absolutely. So we're going to do 10C, D, and E individually. If someone would like to make a motion on 10C, on the special transfer request, Counsel Sinewitz, can you do this? Because I know we saw the language in there that you'd like to see. C.
10C is it?
10C is actually 210 Newberry, right?
Correct.
Move approval, Mr. President, of a, that's a digital billboard, correct? A digital billboard transfer at 210 Newberry Street from...
Excuse me, Counsel, that's 210 Andover Street. Andover Street.
210 Andover Street, I'm sorry. Transfer of a digital billboard from 210 Andover Street from Total Outdoor to Lamar. So moved.
For the motion, Counsel McGinn.
On the motion, Counsel, through you to Counsel Sinewitz, to your point of specificity, is it a, it's a two-face digital billboard, correct?
Jack?
Yep.
You... It's the shopping center, all right?
Yep, so I, just as you go, as you go through these, I think as we've had issues with one side being static and one side being digital, just to make sure that you specify that it's...
Are we positive on that? Because you just said, "I believe." You believe.
It's two-faced digital.
Okay, all right. So moved, Mr. President.
All in favor? Any opposed? To vote? Item 10D, Counselor Sinewitz.
Just make sure I understand. This is for 258 Newberry?
Correct.
And there is currently a static sign there?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Is the billboard above Bill's Automotive slash the BMW, not the BMW repair, Louis' BMW Auto Repair.
That's, that's static.
Yes.
Because that's the one above the trailer park home, so that would definitely, and that's two-sided.
Correct.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I move approval of a special, of a transfer of the billboard at 258 Newberry Street, of a static billboard from Total Outdoor to Lamar. So moved.
For the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. 10...
G.
10E. 108 Newberry Street, which is, 108 Newberry Street is in front of the SIRs, the Quick Change Lube Facility, a little bit north of where the old Dunkin' Donuts used to be on Route 1 South. That's a static, two-sided, static billboard.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I move approval of a transfer of a two-sided, static billboard at 108 Newberry Street from Total Outdoor to Lamar. So moved.
For the motion? Any discussion? Being done, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. 10F, special permit transfer at 80 Newberry Street. This is the jug handle. It is a two-sided, static billboard. Counsel Sinewitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not, who owns this? Hold on. I can't read this. What does it say? I'm, yeah, so I just, Counsel Gould, help me out on this one. I don't have my glasses. I'm having trouble reading this right now. Oh, Shout, Shout, transferring to...
Mansfield Outdoor to Shout Outdoor Media.
All right, I get it. Sorry about that. I apologize. So at this time, Mr. President, I move to...
Is that Centapio?
That is the jug handle. That is Route 1 South. Across the street.
So at this time, Mr. President, I move to, move approval for transfer of a two-sided, static billboard at 80 Newberry Street, from Shout Out, Shout Outdoor Media to, oh, from Mansfield. I can't read, I'm sorry. From Mansfield to Shout Outdoor Media. So moved.
Heard the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I apologize.
It's a vote. Okay, back to the special, back to the hearings.
How about taking 10A and get rid of that, too? And you don't even have a Section 10 to deal with.
Let's go for it. 10A.
10A, ready for counsel adoption, or is amending Chapter 16 licenses, Article 1 in general, and adding a new Section 165 entitled Civil Fingerprinting Adopted As Advertised.
The clerk could read the notice.
Notice is here by giving that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit grant authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM, in the Frank Owing Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass, on the application from Lamar Central Outdoor, 360 Warren Avenue, East Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit, amending special permit 2014-2, seeking to remove the digital faces, sorry, and replace and operate with static faces at 1 rear Newberry Street, PBD, Mass, as filed in accordance with Section 6.1, 11.6, 15.2, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council.
Counsel Joel D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you. Counsel Kelty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City of PBD City Council, my name is John Kelty. I have, I'm an attorney, and I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in PBD, Massachusetts, and I appear on behalf of Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, a company operating out of 360 Warren Avenue in East Providence, Rhode Island. I'm appearing to amend the, I seek an amendment to the special permit to remove two digital faces on this particular sign at 1 rear Newberry and replace it and operate static faces. This matter was before you for show cause hearing. There was a $200 fine levied as a result of that hearing. That fine has been paid through the Building Department here in the City of PBD. It was paid two weeks ago, on the day that it was actually put in our hands. I think that the application speaks for itself. We had amended the narrative portion to correct the last paragraph where we said that the change from digital to static requires an amendment to the original special permit, and therefore, this application for amendment to the special permit is before you. You've now transferred. We're now asking for an amendment to our special permit so that we can operate this as static. I know that there has been some correspondence from the party that holds possession of the lease, and I think we've worked out our differences with that party, and I think we're on our way to asking for you this evening to allow our amendment.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the special permit amendment? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Burdon, 24 Green Street in Lynnfield. So we are right next to the billboard, and we understand that, at the time that this was erected, none of us were aware that this was going to be happening. It's been a very big opposition, imposition to everyone on our street. The lights, when it was digital, were just so bright and glaring in all of our homes. And, you know, when we purchased this house, it was on a nice, quiet street without any of that to deal with. And most recently, when it was taken down, it's been a very big improvement, because it hasn't been being utilized at all most recently. And for it to be changed to static is not entirely helpful, because it will still be lit at night, which is very problematic for us, because the lights are so glaring as well, that they're also going to shine in all of the windows of the neighbors in that area. So we were hoping that we could come to some kind of resolution where this could be less intrusive on the neighborhood. Thanks. And I also, I also just want to thank the town of PBD for being so gracious and such wonderful neighbors to us over there on Green Street, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
David Sweeney from 43 Green Street, same concerns. We moved in there before that billboard was put up. We were never informed that there was going to be something you could see from the space station living on our street with us. We go in the backyard in the evening. You can read a newspaper out there. Blares into the house at night. I go to work early in the morning. It's blaring all day long. It affects the quality of our life, and affects the value of our real estate. We would, we could accept the billboard if it was there, if it's not on it in the evening during the dusk to dawn.
Now, who else like to speak in opposition? Please state just your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Melissa Osborne. Melissa Osborne, at 28 Green Street in Lynnfield. So we actually are in a different situation, where we purchased the home after the billboard was put up, and that was a great concern for us, that, you know, the light coming from that billboard is shining into our house and into the bedrooms, and we recently lost a lot of the tree coverage that we had previously in that space, and it's a lot worse than it was. So I don't know, we're, we're against having that billboard brought up. I feel like our quality of life has improved since the billboard has gone away and the lights have been turned off, and, yeah, so, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Eli Baghdadi, 292 Lynn Street. I represent Stratford Realty Trust, and I propose to postpone any vote on the amendment until the proper signature for the landlord has been, has been signed on the, on the, on the proposal, or on the application. At present, I believe Heck Development has signed as the landlord. One Stratford Realty Trust should be on that line.
Mr. Baghdadi, are you referring to actually the special permit application?
Yes.
Okay, and just for the, for everyone, for the councils, I'm not just going to give you the application. Can you just maybe count how many pages and where you're stating what's incorrect, just there?
Information, Mr. President, I think what Mr. Baghdadi's getting on, on the application, whenever you pull out, apply for a special permit, whoever owns the property has to approve of the, of what's being built on the property or what you're applying for, and if I'm understanding what Mr. Baghdadi said, he owns the property, and somebody else signed the application, and he's not in support of it, so I, I don't know who filled this out, or, I, I, I don't, it's probably improperly before us.
Is that, is that, is that what, do you agree with what Counsel Sinewitz said? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree.
Attorney Kelty, do you have a comment on that?
I'm sorry.
Here of the discussion that was taking place, Mr. Baghdadi brought up?
I think that there was a request to postpone the matter so that the authority of a signature could be verified.
So the authorized signature for the property owner could be on the application, correct? Do you, correct?
The property owner is Ken Heck. He's on there. The party that holds the lease is the Baghdadi property. The people that own the sign want to be Lamar, but the physical land that the sign sits on is now owned by Kenneth Heck.
When the application was filled out, was he the owner? Was the date of the application, was he the owner?
Yeah, it was owned by Ken Heck. I'm not failing to recognize the Baghdadi's rights, you know, that they hold the lease. They hold the lease rights. When they sold the property, they retained the lease rights to the sign.
And I, I understand that also. I just, so Mr. Baghdadi, so there's a, it seems like there's a difference of opinion. Mr. Attorney Kelty states that Mr. Heck is the property owner. He does not, you know, he agrees that you have the lease, and, but he says Mr. Heck is the owner of the property, and you are disagreeing with that?
No.
No. No. Heck Development is the owner of the property. And in our move to sell it to Heck, we retained a swatch of the property that the billboard sits on. And we've retained it for 99 years. And so therefore, all control of that swatch is under Stratford Realty Trust. And therefore, considered as that swatch, Stratford Realty Trust is considered to be the landlord of that swatch and also the leaseholder of the billboard.
And more importantly, the owner of that piece of land. So you got... That's...
Thank you, Mr. President. So, look, if you... I don't know what the cooperation, if there's any cooperation between the two parties, but if he has easements in long 99-year leases, I would assume in court he'd have some sort of say if someone's going to alter his leases on his premises. So I... That's what I would assume. If I was in that position and somebody was trying to change it without my... I think you need to coexist with him and get an agreement on what your... What the plan is. I just don't understand how he cannot be involved... Mr. Baghdadi cannot be involved in the process. Yeah, I don't know.
Counsel Walsh.
I don't disagree with your contention, except for, I believe, the statement was that the application was not properly before us because the landowner had not signed it. So he's not really the landowner. He's got an easement. So it is properly before us.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. So I would agree with you that it is before us properly. You know, I was led to believe that the parties involved had worked things out.
We are in the process of working things out. Sort of last minute.
So I was led to believe incorrectly that the parties have not worked things out. That there's still... Things should be worked out. It's disappointing. I'm looking for a little guidance from my fellow councils. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. What happens if this is not granted? Does it go back to digital or is... Could you speak in the microphone?
Right now, there's no face. It's neither digital or. So we're asking for a permit to allow us to put static signs up.
Right. But if that is not granted, would it be your...
It would probably...
Would it be the intent of the petition to go back and reestablish digital at that location?
No, we wouldn't do that.
So you'd abandon the site?
We would probably, if you denied the request to remove, to go to static, we would probably take an appeal of that to determine whether the council really has the right and authority to do that. This seems to me that it's about kind of a private matter and, you know, similar to other things we've seen before the council. And we now have had someone, you know, come forward and ask for the assistance of the city council with respect to something that's a private lease matter. I think Counsel Sinewitz said it two meetings ago, that had you come in and done this properly, asking for the permit in general, we were always in favor, more in favor of statics than we are digitals. So it seems to me that, you know, the matter before the city council is not the private matter, but is what's in the best interest of the city. Would you let us get to static? And once again, if we can't continue this, this would have to start again. And the same question is likely to be before you.
Counsel Turkle.
All right. I know you've threw you, Mr. President, to Attorney Kelty. I know you've said this, but explain it to me. So Mr. Heck owns the land. There's an easement where the sign is, and Mr. Baghdadi owns the easement. So technically, he is the landowner of that easement. Am I wrong?
He's not the landowner, but he could be construed as the landlord, sure. However, the request on the special permit is for the applicant to sign and for the landowner to sign.
Right. So, I mean, just to answer your question or your inference that, you know, there was some interest in the lease, I don't care about the lease between the two. I just care about if it's properly before us, if the application was filled out properly and the proper...
Signature.
The property owner is listed correctly.
Yes.
That's all I care about. And I have question to that. I know through you, Mr. President, Representative Walsh, I know what you're saying. Is there a difference between the owner of an easement and the landowner? I'm not sure.
Mr. President, if I might, just a simple thing. Our neighbor lives in the front house. There's a house in the back driveway. The people in the back have an easement to go from the street to their driveway, to their parking spaces. Technically, the front home owns most of that driveway. So they're the landowner. The other person has an easement, so he has a right to access that property, but he's technically not the landowner. So it would be the same thing.
Thank you for the clarification. So yes, I believe it is properly before us then. Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Clark, can you just, you know, help from clarification purposes?
On the notice list, the property owner is listed. And I... Jack, do you have a... I think it says Kenneth Heck on it. Yeah.
So I think... I think we've... It seems that the council is comfortable that the owner is Kenneth Heck. Mr. Baghdadi, you know, I'm going to ask you a question if you want to answer it.
Sure.
It's up to you, but...
Sure.
So you understand that their intent tonight is they want to go from digital to static?
Correct.
If we approve that, that's what they're going to do. Is there a reason why you don't want that to happen? Because that's what's before us and that's what seems like... That's a possibility. Do you have an issue with them? If we approve it... Can you... What is, you know... Do you have an issue with that? What is your issue with that?
Well, I guess the only issue with that is that we were not notified when they decided to do this. And by doing so, we were, at the time, in fear of losing a serious amount of income and not to mention the city losing some income too. And we just felt that they were doing this on the sly and we didn't like it. And neither Stratford Realty Trust was informed or my attorney was informed. And it just seemed to be something that Ken Heck and Lamar were conspiring to do in this switch out. But at the present time, last minute, as of several hours ago, I received a call from my attorney saying that Lamar has contacted them or Jack has contacted them, saying that they would like to amend the current lease that we have with Lamar to guarantee that our rent won't change for the next 25 years, which is basically what I was looking for, to be able to maintain our lifestyle that we've come to know and age into retirement But let's see, what was I going to say? The details haven't been worked out yet. No signatures have been exchanged yet. And so I wouldn't have any objection in that regard for them to change to static, knowing that they will guarantee the digital rent to me.
Counsel Kelty, could you... What Mr. Baghdadi just told us, could you confirm that he stated everything correctly to the best of your knowledge that what he just stated? I mean, you heard his concern. I'm trying to move this along, but I'm trying to also... He has some concerns and can you... Can you... That's the word I'm looking for. Excuse me. Alieve his concerns? Alleviate his concerns or address his concerns or acknowledge his concerns and what your client plans to do?
I gave him an instrument tonight that said that we would amend the lease such that there would be no difference in value, whether it was digital or static. And I think that what Mr. Baghdadi said was that that has been what he was looking for. So...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just on this whole thing, this whole discussion that we're having is not dissimilar to what we just had on the Weiss request. We're getting into a legal battle between parties that really isn't part of what we're considering tonight. So I would rather we stay focused on, is it before us properly? I think we've determined it is. Now let's get to whether we're going to be in favor of it or not. But I think the legal battle, with all due respect, is between those parties and not really proper before the city council.
Counsel Gold.
Thank you, Mr. President. Threw you to Tim. Tim, what's the annual fee for digital and what is for static? And Jack, are you... Is there a decrease in revenue for the city of PBD on this?
Yeah. Twenty-five and fifteen.
Sorry?
Twenty-five thousand for a digital, fifteen for static.
So it's significant. It's $10,000. Jack, is there an opportunity to see if your client would be willing to stay with the digital 25,000?
I don't think that my client would agree to that. If that was to be a condition played... Placed on the special permit, I would probably appeal that because I think that the ordinance is clear. There's a fee for digital and there's a fee for static. And I don't think it's a matter to be negotiated as part of a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Sinewitz.
All right. So let's just take a look at this. If you approve it, you're going to switch over to a...
Static.
Static sign.
Correct.
And the city takes a hit for 10,000 from 25 to 15, which you made the move of the static, of the digital illegally anyway, but we all know that. If we deny it, okay, then you're stuck with a pole that has no digital face on it. And what does that mean to your client?
Means a loss of revenue. We've got to... We want to put something up there that will realize some revenue stream. And we're convinced that the static board would be more economically feasible, given the proliferation of digital signs in the area.
What was your fine for? Because when we discussed the violations with... During those multiple meetings...
I think the determination was that it was a fine for being up on the pole, taking down the digitals without a building permit.
Okay. All right. So that was... I didn't know what they fined you for. I didn't know if it was not doing a transfer, not pulling a building permit.
Building permit.
Yeah. But not coming to the city council for... To alter the face of a billboard. So I didn't know it was one of the three. I just didn't know which one it was. So I just feel uncomfortable with this. And I was hoping you guys could work it out. And I know that's a separate issue, but the way this went down with the cannibalizing of the billboard, not telling on anybody, then the city solicitor says there was no violation. And then there was six violations, as I could see. Three transfers were never applied for. Then this billboard had three of its own. So I don't like the way it went down, but I guess now you've got a fine, which is peanuts. And now we're left to make a decision to go from static to digital and take a hit for 10,000. And I know if we do that, that's what we get because you'll appeal it in court. I get it. But I don't like it. I really don't like it. But I'm only one vote. And I'd like both sides to be happy. And as far as the neighbors, I hear your concerns, but they do have a permit for a billboard. There will be something there. If we deny it, it stays static. They can put up... I mean, it stays digital. They can put up another digital. If we approve it, they're going to put up a static sign. So...
Could there potentially be a concession about it not being lit from dusk till dawn?
Mr. President?
I don't... I think that that's not part of the conversation tonight, unfortunately. I just don't think it's... Counsel McGinn? Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just suggesting maybe that the petition answered that rather than you, just if there's any possible mitigation measures that could be taken. They're in the billboard business, so maybe they've dealt with this type of thing before. I don't know.
Counsel Kelty?
I am not at liberty to, you know, put a timer on it this evening. Mike Murphy was intending to be here, but he has acute bronchitis and stayed back in Providence. So I really am not in a position to be able to say that I would dim it, shut it off or any of those things. I think that it is not usual in the industry. I don't see digital or static billboards shut off at night, but... And I don't have that authority.
Counsel Walsh?
Well, just a thought, just following up on that. I mean, since we're deciding the permit, it's not unusual for us to put conditions on a permit. So, I mean, it is possible, if it was the will of this council, to limit the hours that the board could be lighted, so...
Counsel Charis.
Thank you, Eddie. Again, I wasn't on the council when this all happened, but was it the consideration of the fee that the city was going to receive in mind to permit, give permission, give a permit for the billboard to be located there? I reach out to my councilor. So in other words, did we take in consideration that we were getting 25,000 for that billboard? The reason why we gave permission and not to receive 15 and allow it to be put up? I asked my fellow councils.
Counsel Charis, it's not based upon the location. It's based upon the type of billboard, the type of structure. Nothing to do with location.
I understand. But we... This board granted that permit for that billboard to go up there because they were going to get 20... We were going to get 25,000. Would this council give, given that permit, if it was only going to receive 15,000 as a static billboard? Just curious.
So Gravell and then Counsel Sinewitz.
I was here when they... When we approved the permits and there was no discussion about, you know, let's go for the higher revenue one. It was what they applied for. And there were only so many digital ones allowed and so many feet apart. So if they applied for digital, we accepted it as digital. They applied for static, we accepted it as static. And that was it. I can't honestly say that we ever said, well, we don't want... I can't honestly say that we ever said, well, we don't want any static boards because they generate less money, which I think is what you're getting at, so...
Counsel Sinowicz.
Look, it's all market-driven, right? If I can put up a billboard and get more money for digital faces, and I'm gonna make a lot of money, and then the profit, there's so many of them, the profit went down. But as it comes to digital, to what Counsel Charis talked about, a lot of it is location in, like at the trailer park home, we didn't want a digital sign there because we would never approve it because it's shining right into people's homes. So, this one came up, the people didn't know about it, but then he cleared the land. He's putting a subdivision in there, underneath the billboard. I called the town of Linfield, and I asked the town of Linfield, why is that land being cleared? They're putting a nine-home subdivision in there, underneath a digital billboard, which was cannibalized and taken down. I'll leave it at that, why it was done. But, so, that impacts the neighborhood more with that all, you know, all the trees gone. And, you know, who wants to live directly underneath it? You may be down the street, I don't know where you live, I don't know the topography of the land, but that's just a comment. So, but it's market-driven and location. We want to talk about location. We had a static at the Hess station, and then somebody went, went click and then changed it without any approval, and that's how this all turned into jumbled mess with billboards. But it's called greed, and that's what it's all about. And the greed has taken, it's like, remember twenty years ago when bagel stores first opened up? There was one on every corner, and they cannibalized themselves, the profit went away, and there's a handful standing, and that's what's gonna happen with billboards, I guess. Thank you.
Counsel Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm inclined to agree with Representative Walsh. I mean, we're here, we have an opportunity to address the neighbors' concerns, and, you know, if Attorney Kelty would like to challenge that, that's fine. But, I mean, you all know that I've dealt with an issue with billboards over at Cedar Pond for upwards of two years now, which has finally culminated in a resolution for those people. And we have that opportunity here tonight to at least somewhat address. So I would move to, excuse me, Mr. President, I'll let you file your own motion for your own ward, but I think the motion should be to approve the transfer, excuse me, approve the amendment to the special permit with a condition that, and I think it would be fair to both parties to say, you know, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM that it's not lit, if it is a static billboard. And I think that's fair to the billboard company and fair to the residents. And I would be inclined to do that, but that's your decision. Thank you.
So, my commentary is, a couple points. Once again, goes without saying, I wish the city solicitor was here. I did request him. He's not here. And because, the reason why I request is because things come up that we don't expect. I mean, we're told one thing, and then, you know, a different thing happens. I think, just to go back, I think the application is before us properly. I agree with that. The issue with the timer, and I just throw it out there, is that when the ordinance was written for the fees that were gonna be given, weren't they, were they based upon operational hours of 24/7/365, or not? I don't know the answer to that. You know, and the other question, and a disappointment that the representative is not here, is we're just taking their word. I beg to differ. The proliferation of billboards is on Route One North and South. 128 is a pretty good area. So, we never saw any data. We're just telling, they're telling us we can't make money on it. We're buying it. I'm telling you. There's one on 128 South, 128 North by the Centennial Industrial Park coming off, Industrial Office Park coming off, and there's this one. This billboard, in my opinion, there's no one really around it pretty, it's pretty good. But like I said, so we're taking their word, and on their word, we're gonna take a hit of ten thousand dollars a year annually. So, you know, and then, I'll throw out the residents. Is it a way, you know, to help them to go with a static versus a digital? And the next step is to limit the hours. So, there are, you know, there are a lot of balls in the air, so to speak. And, boy, I would like to get some legal advice, but that's not gonna happen, obviously. But I just bring up a couple of those points here that go through my mind and throw out for discussion. Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the ordinance is not gonna say what the rationale was for the fees. What the ordinance does say, and what zoning says, is that it's allowed only by special permit, which puts it before this council. And when it's before this council, we have the discretion to determine what meets a desirable local need and what doesn't, and what might be done to cause it to be in harmony with the setting and the environment. So I think what Counsel Turco is suggesting, there's tremendous merit to that. And I believe that we have the authority to place those conditions on there because it's only allowed by special permit, and this is a special permit granting authority. Thank you, Mr. President.
You heard Jack just say, if there's any limitations on the, look, who's gonna put, who's gonna pay to put an ad on a billboard, and at midnight it goes dark and you can't read it? So, I'm just putting myself out on their side of what they're thinking, and it's a 20-day appeal period, so they'll be in court just like this, so appeal it. So, you know, is, you know, I was just hoping they could just take it back, go work it out, their details come back, and everybody's happy, and you probably have your static billboard, and I think as for the neighbors, I think it's gonna be a lot less intrusive, if there's a static there, than a lit digital going 24/7. I don't know, I don't know how they angle the lights on a static. Can't tell you that, or how it's gonna impact your neighborhood. I don't have that information. But, so it doesn't look like the both sides are gonna come to an agreement, or to pull it back and then come forward for a new hearing, work it out, and call it and figure it out. But, there's no chance of that?
As to us coming to an agreement, these parties? Yeah, I think we're, like, there. We're there. We've done what they've asked. And now it's a matter of, you know, who has the authority to sign different documents that we presented. That's fine.
I can use the line...
Counsel Gravel? You know, it is interesting. It's probably one of the few places in the ordinances that we have some descriptors of limitations. But it's interesting, light is not a descriptor of a limitation. Height, size, noise, number of signs, characteristics of signs. The only thing that would, might even come close, it would demonstrate that the billboard is in harmony with or suitable for the surrounding area, which by granting already, we've said that, and will not do significant damage to the visual environment. So I'm not sure how strongly that would stand, the visual environment, when we approved a fully-lit digital board already on the land, which, by the way, if we deny, they can go and put one back up. So that'd make everybody happy.
Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel Gravel. The only thing I would add is that the environment's changed. The environment's changed. They're putting up this subdivision there, they've cleared out the trees that was, that prevented, provided some level of buffer for these abutters. It doesn't exist anymore, so, you know...
But, they have a pre-existing condition with a lit board, a fully-lit digital board. So, the only thing that can come of this, if we deny, is that, and we say, okay, and they look at it and say, well, I can't have a static board without, by the way, most of static boards have uplights, not downlights, but, to be honest with you, I think that we're gonna be in worse shape if we deny, because they got a pole that's standing there, and they have to do something with the pole. They can put the digital pieces back up. And they've, we've just transferred the right for them to use the pole, to use the pole.
Counsel McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel Gravel. Yeah, I wasn't suggesting a denial. I was suggesting Counsel Turco's approach, which was an approval with the condition. So, just so we're clear.
Counsel Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's move forward. Let's, I suggest we vote on the transfer, excuse me, the switching from digital to static, and that's gonna be the best thing for our neighbors in Linfield. Unfortunately, there's gonna be some lights, but I don't see how we can limit the time of lighting. So, my suggestion is let's move forward, get this done. Thank you.
Go on, then Counsel McGinn.
Mr. President, I would like to amend Counsel Gould's motion to add the time restriction and see how that works out.
There was no motion. He just asked...
There was not a motion. Okay, Mr. President, move to approve the, move the close of public hearing?
Yeah. Public hearing, Counsel Turco, if that's what you wanna do.
Move the close of public hearing.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, and you posed a vote. Counsel Turco?
Mr. President, move to approve the application of Lamar Central Avenue, 360 Warren Avenue, East Providence, Rhode Island, for a special permit, amending special permit 2014-2, seeking to remove the digital faces and replace and operate with static faces at 1R Newbury Street, PBD Mass, as filed in accordance with section 6.1, 11.6, 15.2, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance, with the condition that the billboard be unlit from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So...
You've heard the motion, discussion on the motion. Counsel Gravel?
I'm gonna support the motion, because I think it's better for the neighbors to have the static sign. I honestly don't know, or believe, that the condition is gonna be able to stand, but we'll find out. And I mean, and as long as we don't have to spend, once again, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars defending, you know, something, because we seem to have a great knack at that, defending and losing, I just would, I'm definitely gonna support it, because I think going back to the digital sign, particularly with the change of conditions now, is, it would be ridiculous, so...
Counsel McGinn?
Just on the motion, I don't think there's anything that precludes the petition from coming back. We're up against this time fence, right? Otherwise, we'd probably be asking for them to tell us if they could, if they've done anything in similar circumstances, in terms of how lights are dimmed, or aimed differently, or whatever, to create some accommodation for the abutters. So, there's nothing that prevents them from coming back and requesting that amendment to the condition, should they have a better idea. So, I plan to support the motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Charis?
Yeah, I agree with Counsel Gravel, is that they're gonna support it. I don't believe they're gonna accept the timer, because if I was that business, I'd be saying, no. I mean, you just, you just cut a bunch of, a portion of income out of me without, you know, the first agreement. So, again, I, we're tipping our hand to say we don't wanna spend thousands of dollars in legal fees, because they'll just bring it all the way down, and we'll lose. But, again, I'm hoping maybe they can come back, because of the time-sensitive position that we're in now, that they can come back in January and say, hey, can we work out something?
Counsel Walsh?
Mr. President, I am definitely going to support this motion. And, you know, there seems to be more concern about the petitioner and the hours he can operate. And there was very little discussion about the fact that the City of PBD is going to be collecting less revenue under this. So, look, I think this is a reasonable compromise. As Counsel McGinn said, we're up against this. This is our last evening, unless they want to reapply. So, this, I think, gets the petitioner what they need. It accommodates the neighbors, and I think it is probably a reasonable compromise, where everybody gets something that they're wanting, but no one is going to be the full winner here. So I think this is a very reasonable compromise, and I know this has taken a long time, but this has been a pretty healthy debate.
Thank you. So, I will support the motion. I'm concerned about, you know, the footing of the motion and where it can go, but, you know, that's not my concern, that's the petitioner's concern. But I will support it. So, and I'm gonna, we're gonna make a motion, to close the public discussion, move the vote forward. Go call vote, yeah.
Councilors Gravel?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Sulis?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Sinowicz?
No.
Sasla?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one, two absent.
Thank you, councilors.
Number four J, special permit, Patrick Coburn Senior. Will the city court please read the public notice?
Notice hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM, in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass, on the application from Patrick Coburn Senior, trustee of Mount Pleasant Realty Trust, 3 Mount Pleasant Drive, PBD Mass, for a special permit for renovation and additions to pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure, which includes the addition of a second story over certain portions of the premises. It said 3 Mount Pleasant Drive, PBD Mass, is filed in accordance with sections 1.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Consul, John D. Sasla, City Council President.
Thank you, councilors. John Kelty, appearing on behalf of Pat Coburn. Mr. Coburn has bought the property at 3 Mount Pleasant. He has applied for determination of applicability, and that is issued, and the Conservation Commission has given him permission to undertake the complete renovation and partial demolition of the house at 3 Mount Pleasant. And we are here this evening to seek a special permit from the City Council that would allow for the renovation and additions to a pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure, which includes the addition of a second story over certain portions of the premises, and it's all at 3 Mount Pleasant Drive. In our application, I had disclosed that this is Mr. Coburn's company, which he is here this evening. It's predominantly consultants and design folks, the contractors, trucks, we would be happy to agree that there would be no heavy equipment on the site, there would be no, limited to pickup trucks and passenger cars. In general, people come to talk to Pat about being the GC, General Contractor, on a job, and then they go out and leave this premises and go out and do the work. If there was, I spoke briefly to Counsel Juarez about some kind of limitation, and it's probably better done by wheels, number of wheels, rather than weight, pure weight, because some of the trucks, pickup trucks are more heavy than others. But if you have more than six tires on the vehicle, then you're gonna, you've got, obviously, a bigger truck. We're happy to answer any questions about this project that you may have. Currently, there are some dumpster-style vehicles on the premises, because Mr. Coburn has been given a demolition permit, and as they take out the interior places, they're mounting them in these trucks, and they'll eventually be off the premises. And at that point, the trucks that will replace... they'll eventually be off the premises. And at that point, the trucks that will replace, the trucks that are there now will become the actual construction trucks. I know that Mr. Coburn got permission to tear up a tree, to take out a tree that had ruined a sidewalk. So, Mr. Coburn has done that, and he will be replacing the sidewalk. And I think Counselor Atcharest asked if he would do it in concrete, and he's agreed to that. There was also an outstanding tax bill for the November period. It was 1,700. Mr. Coburn had paid that tax bill.
Yesterday or today?
Yesterday. So, we seem to have no objection from any other department. We have been to the Conservation Commission, and we have our permits from them. And we'd like to move forward with this project. As the demolition is being undertaken, we're finding that there were a lot of areas where there is very rotted wood. So, there may be sections where, rather than, we may replace an entire wall so that we can get the project done properly, and we'll have the right low-bearing capacity structurally. So, with that, I'm happy to answer questions you may have.
Is anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Is anyone like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the petitioner? In opposition being none. Counsel Charis.
Thank you. And I congratulate you for being the sole survivor for tonight, you know, lasting though throughout the night. I did, to the counsel, to the president, I did speak to the petitioner earlier today and to counsel early in the week and about the taxes. And you recognize that the taxes were paid. He says he has a receipt, so I'm believing on that. The construction vehicles, I like what you had to say about the six wheels. Some pickups can have dual wheels in the back. It wouldn't have limited the vehicles that's coming in. I obviously didn't want to put too much of a burden on that. So, I appreciate that. The sidewalk that we talked about, I requested a concrete sidewalk to be where it can be because of the driveway. I would suggest it would be appropriate, I'm sure. It's where it can be and where it cannot be. The other question I had was outside lighting. I did speak to the petitioner to sure if he has lighting in the back park or the front, the side, that they wouldn't be shining on his neighbors if he worked with the neighbors with that, appropriate lighting if he would. The, in this building, you're looking to have one or two tenants also, right? And that would be complimentary to what he is conducting his business, the same timeframes and things of that nature.
Pat's customer interview room will be on the first floor. His offices, design and business offices will be on the second floor. And then there's a space for one or two tenants? Yeah. And they're likely to be professional offices rather than anything retail or any of that?
No food, right?
No food.
No food. Again, and on the, on the application, it speaks of a dumpster to be in the back.
Yep.
What size dumpster were you thinking? It's not going to be used for construction?
Pat.
Hi, I'm Pat Coburn. How you doing? It'll be maybe a 10 or 15-yard dumpster that opens and closes so people can put their trash in from the outside of the building. It'll more than likely be emptied once a week or once every other week. It won't be a construction 30-yard or 40-yard.
And would that dumpster need to be fenced in?
I'm sorry?
Would that dumpster need to be fenced in?
Yes, yes, it will.
And that would be on a, would it be a concrete pad or does it need to be?
Well, right now, we have approval from the Conservation to put crushed stone there. We have to apply to the state for the intent to put paved, it's a paved driveway in there. So, we can, we can put it on a concrete pad once I get approval from, you know...
I suggest you just work with the building commissioner what would be suitable. I will leave it up to them. You're looking to do a second story, and there's limitations to the size of the stories you can, you put on to?
Correct. There already is, portions of the premises are two-storied. The additional second story is over parts of the first floor where there were decks, and we're now going to have two stories, and the decks will become part of the first floor.
Right. And there's not going to be any neon lights inside the windows shining out, you know, things of that nature?
No.
Okay?
We won't take a fortune teller as a...
Well, I'm just, I think you know where I'm going, right, Jack?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. That's it. I think, you know, I applaud you. You've taken a very rundown building, and you're putting some significant amount of money in there. I just ask that when you plow the driveway, make sure you're not pushing it out in the street there. That is a very busy street, the way the cars come in and out. You be appropriate that way and keep mindful of that situation there, especially if no parking in front of that curb there.
Mm-hmm.
Without, I move to close the public hearing? I'm sorry. I apologize. Counselors.
Counsel Gould.
I know you're so in tune in this, if you'd like to...
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Charis or Jack. Is this the second house in on the right with the sliding door beige-looking house?
Yeah. Dan Conley's family owned it years ago, and they had a florist shop in there.
Florist shop, okay. Jack, I, maybe it was the microphone or whatever. I couldn't understand. What are the tenants? Who are the tenants that are going in there?
We feel there'll be professional offices. They'll be, we don't know who they are yet, but they'd be complimentary to his, Pat's business inasmuch as there's no plan for a retail tenant.
And Pat's business is?
Design consultants and general contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Charis.
There's no other questions. I move to support this motion and close the public hearing.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote? Counsel Charis.
I'd like to move to support motion and application from Patrick Coburn, Sr., trustee of Mount Pleasant Realty Trust, 3 Mount Pleasant Drive, PBD, Mass., for the special permit of renovating in addition to pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure, which includes addition to a second story over a certain portion of the premise at said 3 Mount Pleasant Drive, PBD, Massachusetts. So, move.
For the motion?
With the conditions that we spoke about earlier.
Conditions, they're on record?
Yes.
You have them?
That we, the conditions that earlier said, the cement sidewalk.
Could you state them for the clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The cement sidewalk in front of the property, the, hang on, the outside lights not to be shining on neighbors, the dumpster to be installed as suggested by the building commissioner, and no parking in front of the building to the corner of 114 on the street. That's it.
I'll set.
Oh. The construction vehicles, no construction vehicles, trucks limited to six wheels. So, pickups with dual back tires.
Just for clarification, Counsel, we're talking about a cement sidewalk as opposed to a paved sidewalk? Do you just want to be, the clerks, with some clarification there?
Correct. Cement, not tar, not pave. Aesthetically, it looks better.
Thank you. And Counsel McGinn.
I'm sorry. Could I add a curb to that cement sidewalk? Thank you.
Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Charis. Just before we leave the matter, since it was alluded to, the memo from the Conservation Commission, which is eight I, we should receive it to this hearing.
So, move.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote? We'll call vote on the special permit.
Counselors Gervell.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Metzulis.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Sinowitz.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you. We can move right into motions, orders, and resolutions. We already had a report of the one subcommittee that we met earlier this evening. Counsel Gervell.
Well, since I won't be at the Christmas party, I want to wish my friend Barry a good retirement from the City Council, and it was a pleasure to serve. Thank you very much. Love to serve with you.
Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, just one, one motion. Move to have Public Services repair the street at Fairview Avenue where there was a recent water main break. A patch was placed there, and a portion of that patch, along with the, another section of the street, has buckled. So, if they could check that out, so moved.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote? I'll set Counsel Turco, Counsel Gould.
Just one motion. See if Department of Public Services can add some more blue lights throughout the city. I don't know how that gets determined as to what areas get what lights, but I know up in Counselor Metzulis' ward, we could use small lights. Make that a motion. Thank you.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote? Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier, we received item 7A, but we only did the first two appointments on here. So, I would move to approve all of the various additional reappointments listed on the communication from His Honor, the Mayor, dated December 7, 2017. So moved.
And Counsel, just a point of information, I believe it's on the second page, there's a typo. It should, it says...
Page, page three. It should be Daniel Terrance, not David.
You got that correction on your desk tonight?
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Maybe someone we might have. So, motion to approve the appointments, reappointments. All in favor? Any opposed or vote? Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to refer item 8T back to the building commissioner's office. And on the motion, it's a special permit application. I don't see any indication of the building commissioner's signature on it. So, that's the reason for the motion. So moved.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote?
No further motions. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think you signed that, Counselor. I think I have a signed copy on my desk.
You have a signed copy?
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Do you want me to confirm that? I mean...
Are you sure? If you do, then, then I'm okay with it. You're, yes?
Yeah, I think I'm sure.
Not sure. Let's confirm it.
I'm almost positive.
You're positive? Okay. All right. Well, in that case, Mr. President...
Let's put it this way. The building inspector sent the applicant over to our office for a special permit, so...
Okay.
I don't think it'll be...
Then in that case, I'd like to rescind that earlier motion and move to receive the application, set up a public hearing. So moved.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote? Counsel McGinn anymore?
No further motions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Turco, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to receive a late communication from Seva Logistics, Samuel Granito. And if we could get that on the agenda, let's set up a special permit hearing. If we could get that on the agenda for the first meeting in January, Tim, what's it, the 11th?
Yes, they're scheduled for the 11th. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. And, Mr. President, move to receive item 8D for land purchase from William E. Kersetter, request, and refer that to Legal Affairs?
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote?
And, Mr. President, move to receive a late communication from Janelle and Spratt in regards to that land purchase request. And if we could put that communication in Legal Affairs with the land purchase application, that would be great. Thank you.
Motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote?
That's all, Mr. President.
Counsel, did we receive the application for Jubilee Drive 795? Did I miss that?
I received that when I withdrew the, when we filed the motion to withdraw the motion for tonight, the application.
That's on for the 25th, Counsel.
Correct. Thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, if we can receive item 8C, and refer that to the Legal Affairs Committee, and that is the parking ordinance for electric vehicles. So moved.
For the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote?
Also, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd just like to express my thanks to you and to all my fellow counselors here. Serving with you has been an enjoyment, and I appreciate all your friendship. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Tim and Colleen and Allison for everything you do for us. And thank you very much. It's been fun serving with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Metzulis?
Excuse me, Counsel President.
Yes, Counsel Gervell.
I did want to say goodbye to Tom because, but he's, but he's not leaving. So, I think we should have a standing motion, once a month, request that our state rep attend a meeting by choosing.
I'll send Representative Speliotus right over.
Counsel Metzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. And I have one motion from a resident on Nickerson Road to replace the stop sign there that's worn out, and ask Public Works if they notice any signs in my ward that need replacing, to please take care of it. And I'd like to wish the people in my ward and the city a Merry Christmas, and all you counselors also, and see you at the Christmas party. Thank you.
Counsel Charis.
Yes, only one motion is to wish all residents, fellow counselors, and all city workers a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Charis. Counselor Sinowitz.
Oh, oh. Well, first of all, it's customary that we commend our City Council President for a job well done this year. It takes, you know, it takes quite a while to get the hang of it. And just as you get the hang of it, you're out. So, you did a good job, Joe, so congratulations on that. I do have one motion, and I didn't want to dwell on it, but we did have the planning board meeting on Birch Hill, and it was not a fun meeting. It was not a good meeting. There was a lot of disrespect towards elected officials. There was a lot of disrespect to PBD police. And above all, there was disrespect to the neighbors. It was bad. And it's not a good look for the city. And I don't wish any of the councils who have big projects coming up to have to go through that. So, my motion is to look at the feasibility of televising planning board and ZBA meetings because, you know, this, people of this city spend a lot of money to run its government, and they should see what it's doing. And I found the meeting really disturbing. But I don't want to dwell on it, and that's my motion. So, I could go on, but this is the end for me. But, so, so moved, Mr. ...
You've heard the motion, all in favor, any opposed or vote?
So, you know, it's been 10 years. It's been interesting. But, you know, first, I want to thank the residents of the ward for supporting me, you know, for 10 years, and I'm grateful for that. And I had a lot of outreach from people, mall pots of the city. I was shocked, you know, when I said it, and they were coming up to me, and they were disappointed that I wasn't running. And I just, I just didn't have it, you know. I just, I could have run at large. I think I would have done well, but I just didn't have it in me. And if you don't have it in you, that's when I knew to pack it up. Maybe I'd come back, maybe I'd run, I don't, maybe I'd run for higher office. But at this point in my life, I just felt that it was time to go. And I think, and as Counsel Gervell can probably relate, when you lose somebody, you know, it was a tough one for me last year with my, with my dad. So, kind of lost my fastball after that. So, but it was an interesting 10 years. I think we accomplished a lot. I think we accomplished a lot. We did middle school. Crystal Lake was amazing. We got, I couldn't believe it ever got done. I never thought it would. I didn't support the vote, the vote, but Belichick says it is what it is and hopefully, you know, it, 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 it works out well over there. And I just want to say, everybody's got a different personality, you know, on this council. And I'm, I'm the type of personality is, is I like, I work well when, under pressure. And I like when we have heated debates and I love going back and forth and talking about issues. We don't always agree, but that's what it's about and I kind of thrive in that environment. Everybody...
I'll tell him.
Yeah. But, you know, and I think at the end of the day, we're judged by our actions and not what we think. And I'll leave that at that. So, you know, whether we agree or we disagree, we should get into the fray and not remain silent. There's a lot of people that I've worked with within, no, thank you, all of my fellow councilors, obviously, tolerate me for the last 10 years and a lot of, and the mayor, obviously the mayor, I don't want to leave out the mayor, but those great people that work in the city. And everybody from, I think I wrote a list down of people. First of all, Tim, Colleen, and Allison. It's been good working with you. It's been awesome. But even, you know, Bob Langley and Jim Nicholas on Crystal Lake, they were amazing. Every time I had an issue in a ward, I'd meet Jim Nicholas out at the, at the homeowner's site at 7:30 in the morning before, you know, so they could, before they went off to work. And they had no problem. I'll meet you there anytime. So they went above and beyond. Sharon Cameron helping out on aggregate, she was just super, you know, in some of the issues we had when they, they built the toxic bridge down there. Al Talarico, the short time that I worked with them, I thought he was great. I didn't have any concerns with Al. I thought he did a good job. Police and the fire helped me on aggregate and all those issues throughout the years. Lucia, Mary Belavance. And, and last of it, the neighbors really were the ones that supported me and some of them had helped me on some of the issues. Crystal Lake, all the volunteers. So, it was, it was a good run for 10 years and once again, I thank everybody for working, working together and hopefully, we made the city better and that's what it's all about at the end. So, thank you.
I just need to make two quick motions. I'd like to make a motion, Department of Public Services, to repair the guardrail at the corner of Gooddale Street and Helen Drive. You heard the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote? I also like to make a motion that Department of Public Services pay special attention to plow on the sidewalks from the neighborhoods of Centerfield and Proctor Circle up to the high school. That is very long distance and there's some new walkers and we need to just, I'd like to, once again, just reiterate, they need to make sure that the plowing from Centerfield and Proctor Circle to the high school is cleared 100%. On that note, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be the City Council President this year. You know, Ed, you're in great hands. I mean, Tim takes every phone call. If he doesn't pick up, Colleen's there, Allison's there, so any question you had, and I had a few, but they're always there for you, so you're in good hands. To my fellow councilors, I tried to do the best I could and I hope you were happy with my performance. And to Representative Walsh, we came in together, we ran together. Something that's special, I always have that bond with you. Good luck. I'll call you if I need you. And to Barry, thank you for all your guidance and support over the years. Going to miss you, but I got your phone number. And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And I'd like to also, lastly, just thank my family. Have a good night. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Oh, excuse me. No, we gotta, oh, I apologize. We have, usually do it after this. I apologize.
Let's see how fast we can do them. Class 1 motor vehicle license.
Thank you, David.
Renewal for 2018. Accurate PBD 233 Andover Street, BMW PBD 7 Centennial Drive, BMW PBD 221 Andover Street, Mini PBD 209 Andover Street, Jaguar Land Rover PBD 247 Newberry Arti of PBD 252 Andover Street. Move to receive, approve, subject to all papers being in order.
You heard the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote?
Class 2 motor vehicle license renewals for 2018. 222 Newberry Motors, 222 Newberry Street, AC Auto Sales 3A Bourbon Street, Alex Auto Sales 480 Lowell Street, Allen Auto Trim Inc., 27 Holly Street, American Auto Export 484 Lowell Street, Auto Choice of PBD Inc., 249 Andover Street, Auto Mall Collection 218 Andover Street, Auto Transporters of New England, R55 Linfield Street, Bill's Auto Sales, 256 Newberry Street, Car Craft 258 Newberry Street, Century Tire Company Inc. of PBD 53 Walnut Street, Country Club Motors 90 Margin Street, DNR Auto Sales and Repair 100 Bernie Street, Desi's Used Cars 108 Newberry Street, Elite Pre-Owned Auto 153 Newberry Street, Four Star Servicing 134 R. Newberry Street Unit RUB, JRM Auto Sales 80 Newberry Street, Louie's BMW Specialist Limited 260 Newberry Street, Malia Towing Inc., 161 Newberry, Washington Street. We have Mario's Used Cars 245 Andover Street, Michael's Motors LLC 1 Sylvan Street, Motor Works 258 Newberry Street Unit C, North Shore Auto Sales 218 B Newberry Street, PK Motors Cars 195 Washington Street, PBD Auto Clinic 3R Bernie Street, Prestige Motors of PBD 257 Andover Street, RNA Automotive Inc., 226 Lake Street, Rescue Motors 55R Walnut Street, Russ's Used Cars 20 Wallace Street, Saccos 119 to 121 Lynn Street, Summit Auto Sales 14 Newberry Street, Tremont Auto Sales 97 and 1/2 Tremont Street, Unlimited Sales 3 Bernie Street, USA Speedy Auto 108 Newberry Street, Walnut Street Auto Sales Corporation 5557 Walnut Street, Wilson Square Auto Sales 2 Andover Street. Move to receive, approve, subject to all papers being in order. Class 3 motor vehicle license renewal for 2018. Pinto Recycling Inc., 147 Summit Street, Building 3C and D, PBD Auto Collision 9B Ria Colla Street, Peterson's Automotive Inc., 114 Newberry Street. Move to receive, approve, subject to all papers being in order. Entertainment license renewal for 2018. AOH Division 11 58 Lowell Street, Azurian Brothers Holy Ghost 20 Holly Street, Petucci's Restaurant 15 Newberry Street, Bonkers 535 Lowell Street, Brothers Cucina 25 Newberry Street, Buddhist Tavern...
Should just approve as listed?
Approve as listed. Dispense with the reading. How about use of PBD High School vocal music, PBD February 13th to 14th, 2017? Move to approve, subject to all papers being in order.
Motion in favor and opposed to vote?
Taxi limousine driver license, Paul Giffett License 46. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
So moved.
Banner request, North Shore Medical Center, June 4th to 25th, 2018, as well as the Progeria Research Foundation, August 15th to September 17, 2018. Move to receive, approve, up, subject to all papers being in order.
So moved.
Utility contractors license, EKB Equipment LLC 9 Forest Lane, Manchester, Mass. Move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
So moved.
General licenses renewal for 2018. Dispense with the reading and move as, move to receive and approve as listed, all papers being in order.
So moved.
And that's it.
8A, please.
8A is a zoning amendment.
It's a zoning matter. Mr. President, through you, I think we need, given the timing, I think we have to refer that to the planning board because we've got 14-day time fence on that.
Yes, motion, I heard the motion, all in favor and opposed to vote?
Mr. President, item, move to receive Item 8B and send to the planning board. So moved.
Motion in favor and opposed to vote? F, please, we see.
Move to receive Item 8F. Move to receive Item 8G.
So moved.
Move to receive...
G.
Item 8J.
G, G, we got G already, got that.
We got G already.
Okay, and J. And 8I, we did that during the hearing.
We did 8I, we're at 8M. Move to receive Item 8M. Move to receive Item 8N. Move to receive Item 8O.
So moved.
Move to receive Item 8P.
So moved.
Move to receive Item 8Q.
So moved.
Move to receive Item 8U and approve. This is the reappointment of...
Any discussion? All in favor and opposed to vote?
And move to receive the late communication, I think you got this one, Counselor Turco, from, late communication from Kurt Belavan, dated 8 December 2017, and refer to the matter on Item 4B. So moved. And the last one I believe that we didn't get was move to receive the late communication from Garrett Whitney, dated December 14, 2017, and refer to the matter in Item 4F. So moved.
Thank you, counsel, again. Can I have a motion adjourned? Happy holidays, everybody.